Okay, we're gonna get started. So I will call a meeting to order and if we can do a roll call, please. Mayor Dexter?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Khan?
Here.
Councilmember French?
Here.
Councilmember McCone?
Here.
Councilmember Meyer?
Present.
Councilmember Sherman Warren?
[laughing]
Councilmember Stutz?
Here.
Mayor Joe West?
Present.
Attorney Boyer?
Here.
All right, so let's rise for the federal leaders. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, we do not have any ceremonial matters or proclamations this evening, so we will just get started with our first public comment period. I have a few people signed up tonight. The first person on the list is Ben Stanley. And just as a reminder, for those of you who want to speak, we just ask that you state your name and whether or not you're a resident of the city of Port Angeles for the record. I don't see Ben, so we'll move on. Jeff Breitbach.
I am a city resident and I have a question about the Transportation Benefit District that was charged for the 2.1%. I just was wondering if you could tell me how the money's been spent and how much has been gathered and where it's going in the future. I haven't heard anything about it really since we passed it, and I'd like to know more about it. So you can maybe get together with one of you and work out and find out what's wrong with it, or unless you know what's going on with it, then I'll come back in a month and you can explain it.
That sounds great, and I will, if you want to maybe leave a business card but stop, we can see about us getting an email to you.
Okay, thank you.
And Madam Mayor and Council, I'd be happy to ensure that I sit down with our Public Works Director and walk through the expenditures of the Transportation Benefit District.
Great, thank you. All right, the next speaker on the list is Jack Carleso. Also, I forgot to mention that a public comment is generally three minutes, and so the light will give you an idea of when your time is coming to it in.
Yeah, Councilman, I'm Jack Carleso, neighbor of Hatton Lock and Hatton School. I'd like to bring up the topic of fluoride like I did three years ago, and we got it out of water and I don't get it back in water. So I don't wanna, I wanna be mature, I don't wanna be disrespectful, although I disagree, okay? And I better go through this kind of rapidly because there's some science involved, and I try not to get bogged down in science. Okay, in the words of the wise man, "To learn more from food is question, and to food can learn from wise answer." So, let's be wise. If you drink one glass of water a day a week, fine, go as much forward as you want. Well, if you wanna take three to two to toothpaste and pay one, eat it and go to jail for a day and see how you are in the morning, because one to a toothpaste, hell, there's a lot of them. That's cool. It's probably not even politically correct. But if you wanna be hydrated properly, we've got 10 pints of blood pumping and we've got 70, we're supposed to have 70 pints of lymphatic fluid going through our meridians or our lymphatic channels. If you don't have that, be thankful that the Lord gave us a machine and that returns the water around to the golden 40,000 times. You wouldn't be going, you wouldn't be going unburdened. Okay. I can do a lot of things, but I'll try to keep this simple, but you need to take 64 to 128 ounces of water a day till your system's full. If you do that every day with fluoride, you're gonna get release. Kids are gonna get release. I went through the whole list last time I was here, and I'm gonna do it again. It's charged with acid. You have two choices: your body can be alkaline or have to be full of electrons, or it can be acidic. If your body's acidic, it was negative, 25 millivolts, they can't get in. If your body's 25 positive, cancer, diabetes, bymalogen, lupus, acid reflux, rheumatoid arthritis, fat, every, because your body is made to encapsulate acid with fat. Do you think that, you take electrons in, burn them, okay, sorry. Lighters came from Westport, I've been in Westport for three years. They put nothing in the water. Instead of checking it once a month, they check it once a week. It's about negative 200, because they're surrounded with water like we are, alkaline water. Here, that's full, that's what you get when you put 3 drops in water that's full of alkaline. If they add oxygen, you drink the water up there, you don't drink any of your water.
Okay, sir, if you can wrap it up, that would be great. Your three minutes, sir.
I'm trying to, oh, how much?
Your three minutes are up, so if you have a closing statement you wanna make, that would be great.
Let's put it this way, do you guys, any ladies care about this thing? I know you do. Why don't you go to the vice treatment plan, have them check the water before they put anything in it, see what the pH is up in, or an ORP meter, which is potentially to read the oxidation, and see first off if it's had to oxygen to get in. I mean, you don't need to worry, you don't need to worry.
Okay, I'm gonna need you to come back for the second public comment if you want to continue, please.
Please, don't give your kids off drinks. Government options, 400 millivolts of acid.
Okay, thank you very much.
When they cut open tumors, they find oil-based pesticides. I'm telling you, you're making a big mistake if you care. Check it out.
Thank you very much.
If you don't, you're gonna...
Can I just ask for clarification, sir? Did you start your comments saying you heard the city is putting fluoride in the water? Are you? Okay, that's not the case. That's not been a discussion since 2017.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's right. Glad we could clarify that for you.
Don't give your kids off. Go, go, yeah. Thank you.
All right, next on the list is Ingrid Karmine.
My name is Ingrid Karmine, and I live in Port Angeles, and I want to tell you that I'm excited about this new city council. Welcome. During the past several years, I've volunteered at TAPI, a die-in drop-in center for those who are experiencing homelessness. Here, I have befriended many citizens of Port Angeles who are without a roof to sleep or rest under. They are members of our society and need to be treated with compassion and respect. Generally, their needs are simple: a place to live, a place to socialize during the day, and respect. Serenity House provides shelter and food for many of the homeless of Calum County, but many others cannot live with the rules or the time constraints, or they do not feel safe, especially women, staying at Serenity House. Ideally, each person or family would be housed in a safe, separate, respectable housing. However, before that is achieved, we need to give those a place where they can legally pitch a tent or stay in temporary housing. The campsites and the ravines in the forest cause considerable environmental damage, but until we provide sufficient safe areas for those experiencing homelessness to legally stay with restrooms or porta-potties and accessible garbage pickup, we cannot expect any different results in our natural areas. When the Liberty Bell was fenced off, we eliminated a safe area for those experiencing homelessness to socialize. They stayed there because it was a rain shelter, it was close to restrooms, and their friends were there. They need to be provided with a similar area in the city. Serenity House does not provide low-barrier access places to stay during the day. Ideally, these places would have activities as well as a rain shelter. Those experiencing homelessness are our citizens, our neighbors, our relatives, and our friends. Most people of Port Angeles know this and help with their needs, but a few steal from them, harass them, and threaten them. We need to stand up against this to show all the citizens of Port Angeles that each person living here is a valuable citizen and care about it. I invite each of you to spend time with the homeless, perhaps by volunteering at TAPI, like Ed Chad did, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, or Saturday evening, or at the Food Not Bombs Lunch, February 8th, from 11 to 1, at Jesse Webster Park. Get to know their stories, get a feel of how difficult life on the streets is. I especially invite city employees of the Parks Department, who put the bars around the Liberty Bell and eliminated the place for the homeless to stay during the day. Come, come and get to know the people you're talking to. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa Howl, maybe, or Hawke?
Oh, Hawke. Good evening, I'm Mrs. Howlin, and I serve in the City of Kent. I'm homeless by state, so we are allowed to be there from 8:00 to 9:00 to 7:00 in the morning. The rest of the time, we're out in the weather. It's cold snowing, we have to stay during the day, but once it stops snowing and the snow started melting, we're back out in the streets. I'm here today to ask for help in getting a place where we can go out of the weather, out of the environment, and away from the public who think we are all drug addicts and alcoholics. I was a city councilwoman and was told that the memorial program is for the public, not the homeless, therefore, we are diagnosed as not part of the public. We are part of the public, we're in a bad situation, but most of us care about our community, try to work in our community, try to better our community, but we're all labeled as the same person, and we're not. I try very hard to be productive. I come here, I ask for help. They seem to be ignored, as I feel, but I still come and they still ask. And all we're asking is for a place out of the weather where we're not gonna be bothering the public that doesn't want to consider us part of the public. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for coming and being the voice for our community to remind us that we have some work to do. All right, I'm gonna go back to Ben Stanley.
I'm Ben Stanley. I am a Port Angeles resident, and I also happen to be the current Chair of the City Planning Commission, as well as the Chair of the Climate Planning Subcommittee, as recently decreed. I'm here talking really just in the capacity as a private citizen, however, officially. So basically, we're moving forward with the climate plan for the city of Port Angeles over the next year and a half, which has been approved by City Council, and we're at a big turning point in our planning process. And so over the next month or so, we're meeting twice, including tomorrow night here in these chambers at 5:00 PM. And we'll be asking for volunteers to collect data in a number of different aspects of our community. One is related to the Fusion Community Resilience Project, which we've actually made connections to Northern Arizona University and they're running a program that helps us track our supply chain resilience, basically meaning where all of our businesses and our governments and everyone are getting supplies from here in the peninsula, whether that's in eastern Washington State or Oregon or anywhere around the world. And so this is a pilot program run by this university. They've accepted us as a pilot group, where we would have to pay for the service. And so basically, they need us to collect data in our community from businesses and others about how to best have resilience in our supply chain. So we're looking for people to run this effort, in particular, hopefully, three or four members of our business community or emergency management community, I think would be ideal, but we're looking for ideas there. Second, we're hoping to conduct a carbon inventory to track our carbon emissions here in the city of Port Angeles as well as Peninsula. We're in the process of doing outreach to a number of big institutions, and we're hoping to do a number of different things to outreach to the public, to back and forth that. And so we're hoping to have volunteers that would come to our meeting to, one, volunteer to help spearhead this public outreach effort, because we really need to reach all members of our community. And also, we really need volunteers to help with the data collection and our carbon inventory. And so we're using software to do that, but we have to go to a lot of different city departments as well as businesses around the peninsula to get that data. So we're really just looking for volunteers at this point, and anyone who's motivated to help. And from there, we're gonna hopefully craft a plan over the next year that can be fitted to our comprehensive plan, as well as provide us a standalone climate plan to move forward both to protect our city against natural disasters and other events like that, as well as hopefully mitigate our impacts in terms of carbon emissions. So having said that, I just invite anyone here, as well as anyone who's not here listening to Police Comfort Meeting tomorrow night at 5:00 PM, and then hopefully on Wednesdays, every other Wednesday after that, here in the City Council chambers. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone else who would like to speak in this first public comment period? If so, please come on up and...
Good evening, Council. Arthur Wojnowski. Tonight, I'm here representing Peninsula Area Public Access, and we would like to invite what we would choose from the council to come and join us at our board meetings to represent the city. We hold our meetings the second Tuesday of every month at 6:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you. I will make a note of that for our discussion under boards, commissions, and council appointments. All right, anyone else? Sorry, anyone else?
Hi, I didn't sign up, but my name is Ed Chad. I live in Port Angeles. I appreciate what Mr. Stanley had to say and would be glad to be there tomorrow. And I'm speaking, in this case, as the private citizen. I'm involved with Olympic Climate Action, Climate Action Group, and our group is involved with the city, particularly with the subcommittee. But tonight, as an individual, I'd like to make a recommendation having to do with an item on your agenda. It's I-3, and it has to do with your strategic plan for 2019 and 2020. I sent you all a message a day or two ago on this topic, so you pretty much have what my comments are, but I'm just going to reiterate them. Given that on November 6th of last year, council passed a resolution that included some items for immediate action on the part of city council, I think it's appropriate that the council, if you still believe that resolution that the last council passed, incorporate that into your strategic plan for this year. I recognize that there are some implications of making changes to the strategic plan. I believe that the amount of extra work that would be involved in incorporating it into the plan would be minor, editorial, and given that council made a commitment to take quick action on these matters anyway, it's something that I would imagine you'd want to formalize in that strategic plan. What I am referring to is the part of the resolution passed on November 6th that laid out a few recommendations. Number two talked about three items to be given priority, and item C is to continue to emphasize citywide energy use reduction. It's very clear that this part of the resolution was for city council and not for the planning commission. If you look at the language, it's not the kind of thing that the planning commission can take any kind of immediate action on, but the city council can. So I'm referring to items 2C, I through 5. My email to you sort of laid those out. And to make it even easier, I went into your strategic plan, figured out how to sort of make it into a Word document, and then in Track Changes mode indicated places where I think the revisions could be made. Obviously, I'm open to interaction if you have any questions or would like any more input on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who's here who would like to speak during this first public comment period? All right, then I will move on. Do we wanna start our presentation? We have a presentation tonight from Integral Consulting, the Western Harbor cleaner that we've been working on, and since they are guests, I'm gonna recommend that we move them up and let them go now and they're too long for the presentation.
Madam Mayor, we certainly want to welcome Integral Consulting. I know they have not perhaps had time to fully set up yet, and so if there is a need to have a little bit of time, perhaps we could cover late items while the setup is taking place.
That sounds great.
Mayor, I don't know if this is probably the time that I need to make a statement in reverse integral.
Sure.
In the presentation. Yeah, I just want to get it out of the way, but I just wanna announce that my employer, James House Callan Tribe, does have an interest in this subject, but I'm going to refrain from participation or decision-making on this topic. The information that they're gonna be providing is public information, so I'm gonna still be here to listen to the public information, but I will refrain from decision-making and participating in discussion.
All right, thank you for letting us know that. All right, so late items. Staff, do you have any late items? Oh, you're ready to go. All right.
Council, we'll go ahead and move forward, and we'll get to late items after. Thank you. So I do want to welcome Linda Baker from Integral Consulting. Linda has been part of our team for a number of years now as we've worked through the Harbor cleanup process, and she's going to share some of the details on the medial investigation and feasibility study and how we got there. So again, we'd like to welcome Linda Baker this evening.
All right, that's Nathan. Hello, everyone, if you hear me okay. As Nathan said, I'm gonna give an update on the RIFS process of medial investigation feasibility study. First, I'll start with a little background information on the regulations and the process, and then talk a little about the medial investigation feasibility study and the next steps. So this, to start, this is the, this shows the different sites we have here, the Western Port Angeles Harbor site being the one outlined in pink, and that's what we're here to talk about today. The blue is the Rainier site, and that's on a separate process, you know, with ecology, but a different process. So for the Western Port Angeles study area, the study area outlined in pink, it was addressed by the medial investigation feasibility study. The dash line outlines the segment cleanup unit, and that's where the concentrations are above the cleanup levels, where there will be action of one kind or another. And so the Western, the RIFS has been prepared by a group of potentially responsible parties. The Western Port Angeles Party Group is what we call everyone, and it includes Georgia Pacific, the pond, Maryland Rain, and the port and the city. And Integral along with Banker, QEA, and Floyd Snyder do the work to pull RIFS together. The regulatory framework of the cleanup is being done in the mountainous control assets of Washington State law and regulations, requirements, and guidelines regarding cleanup, how to investigate sites, how to establish cleanup standards, and how to evaluate a range of options and, you know, before just selecting one. There's a complementary set of regulations that you may hear of, complement sediment management standards. They're a complement to MACHA, and they address one of the specifics of the sediment cleanup, which tend to be more complicated. Both of these sets of regulations are administered by Department of Ecology, and that's who we've been working with to pull the RIFS together. And so the framework, the RIFS, the medieval investigation feasibility study, for mapping the sediment contamination and evaluating the risks, a lot of intermediate options. The next step, the next step that we're about to embark on after the public comment period is preparing a cleanup action plan, which memorializes Ecology's decision on the selected cleanup method. After the cleanup action plan, then the remedial action starts, and there's a remedial design phase, and then the remedial action, and finally, long-term monitoring to ensure that that action is effective. So how did we get here to here? There's been some stuff since, definitely before 2007, but beginning in 2007, the legislature established Puget Sound Partnership with the goal of restoring the health of Puget Sound. And Port Angeles Harbor was named as one of the six priority sites, and Ecology began investigating, and they identified, you know, contamination that they called a decided and required remediation. And these three pictures are, I'll talk a little bit about the photographs we took of the site to help us understand, but they show different amounts of wood debris in the harbor, you know, kind of the rest of the town. So as things move forward, we entered into, the potentially responsible parties entered into a 2013 agreed order with Ecology that set the wheels in motion for the RIFS. And this map shows, it's just, it's one of the maps out of the RIFS, it shows ownership, with the yellow being the city ownership, and the pink, it's the federal government and then various entities within the harbor. So the remedial investigation is based on the site data from 2002, the predated the work that we did, and then investigation work is under the map order from 2013 to 2014. And, you know, we collected samples of a number of chemicals to understand what the nature and distribution were, what risks were posed, and identified indicator substances. And this is the map. This map shows the dactin distribution, the dots are sample, surface sediment sample locations that were collected throughout the harbor, and the different shading, the orange are the highest concentrations, and, you know, going through yellow to green. So a number of these were generated for a number of chemicals and you can see them in the, in the RIFS if you wanna dig into it. We did a number of types of studies, pretty comprehensive surface and subsurface sediment sampling chemistry, and that's, again, these are the surface and subsurface sediment chemistry locations. We did sediment toxicity testing, you might hear it called bioacide testing. You put different creatures in the sediments, see how they survive. We did chemical uptake by organism testing of that, and you might hear, hear about that. It's bioaccumulation testing, seeing if the bioavailability testing, seeing, depending on how the chemicals are, they might be available to organisms, they might not be. So we did a few studies on the bioavailability, and then we did a photographic survey of sediment profile throughout the whole harbor, gives you a good idea of the physical conditions and some information on the chemistry too, based on the appearance and the abundance of life. And the outcomes of the study, PCBs, dactins, metals, particularly arsenic, mercury, zinc, and cadmium, issues that need to be dealt with in the harbor, as well as carcinogenic pHs. This map shows the pulp and wood waste that exists in the harbor bed, and that's important to understand from, you know, it's not the greatest for the sediment, but it is recovering from the pulp and wood waste, but it also affects what remedial technologies you wanna consider using. So once we've found the ancient sediment contamination, have an understanding of risk pathways, we set the actionable levels to look at where remedial action is needed. We divided the site into smaller areas called sediment management areas, and this graphic shows about different sediment management areas. The pink is what we call the inner harbor, and the purple is the, we didn't, and the kind of brownish-yellow color is the rest, the rest of the harbor. And based on the physical and chemical properties of each of those areas, it makes sense to look at the remedial action, what you would do separately in each of those areas. And so you look at these, so probably best to start talking about cleanup technologies first. What cleanup technologies would you look at in these three areas? And, you know, dredging is one of them. And, you know, dredging is one option. It's digging, digging up underwater mud with excavator or barge. It has pros and cons. It's very difficult in deep water. It's also very difficult where the contamination is thick. And with, with dredging in deep water, it releases contamination, it's not a perfect process. It's especially not a perfect process whether it allows the debris and lobs and things that stir up the sediment as you dredge. But, but you can also dredge in the near shore, and sometimes you can do that from the land itself at low tide, and so those are near shore removals, there's lots of residuals generated. Another technology that's common to look at is capping. Let's cover and isolate the contamination with, you know, you study the physical processes, make sure the layer is erosion-proof, whether it's sand or rock or whatever kind of material we need, and how thick a layer you need to isolate it, isolate the chemicals from, from the water, in the sediment bed. Enhanced natural recovery is applying a thin layer of sand to the, to the sediment bed, and one of the nice things about enhanced natural recovery is it doesn't destroy the biological life that's already there. It's, it's a layer thick enough to attenuate the contaminants, but not to smother the life. And modern natural recovery is a technology that is, that just relies on monitoring, where you can look at the sediment, you say, it's recovering, it's going to take a while, but it's, you know, the concentrations are really low, we can monitor it and watch this, you know, the streams bring more sediment, and, and the water column, and, and track, track this progress towards cleaning itself up. And so, so then, so, I can't read all this, but for the, for each SMA, we developed a range of alternatives, you know, from very aggressive to the least aggressive, and we figure out the areas, the volumes of sediment, the, the costs, the construction years, you can see in the far right column, the construction duration, and you look at the benefits and the costs of each alternative. And this is, after you go, and you can look in the FFS and see these tables with a lot of detail, you look at the protectiveness, the short-term risk, the long-term risks, and the implementability are about four major criteria, and then you look at the costs separately, and then you do a disproportionate cost analysis under the MACHA regulations, where you look at the costs of the different alternatives and their benefits, and you try and basically identify the sweet spot where the, where the weighted incremental costs and benefits provide, provide the best value. And so this is SMA 3, the broader harbor-wide SMA, and, and we end up coming out at about 3B is the alternative that was preferred by the Western Port Angeles Harbor group, and probably Ecology has been heard, pending the public comment period, will move forward.
Can I ask a question about that last one? Get back to this slide. So you said 3B was what came out?
That's right.
As the preferred alternative. So we did just choose the cheapest? We chose the most valued? Like, value doesn't just mean?
No.
An economist kind of, okay?
It is, it is incremental, it's a weighing of the benefits, the protectiveness, the long-term permanence, short-term risks, and implementability versus the costs, and you don't just get to choose the low-cost one. So, so the preferred cleanup remedy, SMA 1, which is the, is the inner harbor, has capping, the contamination there is very, very deep and very thick, and it would be high-risk to take out. So there's a thick cap land there that will be monitored. The near shore will be excavated because there's less risk associated with that removal, and that's the orange area, and the yellow area is the cap. The, the lagoon has, has capping along the shoreline, and it has thin sand placement in the center, and the center has lower-level contamination, and there is eelgrass there, and so we're interested in, you know, not smothering eelgrass, but enhancing the natural recovery and putting well in the habitat to remain. And in that SMA 3, the broader harbor, there's enhanced natural recovery, and it's a little bit hard to see, but, 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 sorry, the green areas are the enhanced natural recovery areas, and then the blue areas are the modern natural recovery areas. So, and SMA 3 in the broad part of the harbor, the concentrations are lower, and we can achieve the goals, the cleanup goals that were set by enhanced natural recovery over and over. It's still a lot of acreage for enhanced natural recovery, and then modern natural recovery, and the rest of the harbor, and so they'll be sampling to ensure that we achieve the goals. But all the studies today suggest that's just temporary.
Linda, I just want to, my apologies, I just want to mention to counsel quickly that we're more than happy to make these slides available after the meeting. I know that some of them are a little bit difficult to read. Many of the exhibits that you see, maps and graphics, are coming right out of the RIFS document, which is also posted and available on Department of Ecology's website.
Just briefly, thin and thick, how thick is thick enough, and is thin?
So the E and R layer that's envisioned as part, through the feasibility study process is six inches, and that's sufficient for the biologically active zone for most of the creatures that live in the harbor. And then thick, I believe 3 feet is envisioned, and so, and that's a cap, and you have to go make sure it's stable. The E and R layer enhances natural recovery and mixes with the existing sediment and sediment water coming from the creeks and the water column, and, and so that's not, it's a little different thought. It essentially serves as a cap, but it's a little different thought process, and it allows mixing with the cap in the inner harbor, it is designed to be thick enough that there won't be mixing.
With six inches, like what mollusks or other brooding animals are present, and do they go below six inches in that area?
So there's, there's been a lot of study elsewhere, Port Gamble and elsewhere in the harbor, I'm sorry, Port Puget Sound, at six inches. They, they normally go about half that, and there are some that go deeper, but that's why it's enhanced natural recovery layer and not cap, because they're less abundant and, and won't, won't cause that much mixing, that it could be a problem. And so this, this, these are the, these are also in the RIFS, and they show more detail of the, the inner harbor with the capping and the excavation, the lagoon with the capping and the E and R green, and then the areas of the SMA 3 of the main harbor. And so, so what, what, we went through the, the size of the investigation, comprehensive analysis of alternatives, and, and we have integrated cleanup alternatives that meet criteria of MACHA and SMS, and it's consistent with the future uses of the harbor, and, you know, we went through it all, but hotspots are excavated or capped, less impacted areas are subject to E and R, and, and there is a planned 10-year recovery time for the, for the natural recovery areas. The estimated cost is 34.4 billion, there's a six, a six-season construction period, that's allowed sand to bring in, and then a long-term monitoring period of this plan, due to 10 years, to its performance, and long-term for the cap area, long-term monitoring.
With it just for the record, that was million, not billion?
Oh, sorry. Sorry about that, that's all.
So protective of human health and the environment, like what standards are we looking at, or 10 years, will there be crab harvest restrictions, that sort of thing?
So there's restriction, there's restrictions for other reasons in the harbor, which I could look up for you, you can do that, but I can't tell you exactly why, depending on what you remember, but, but, so it isn't envisioned, it isn't, so those restrictions will continue to exist in fact harvesting in the harbor, but it's, it's intended to be protective of the fish and the medical organisms and the crabs after the 10 years. But I, I can't tell you that it'll let people harvest because of other restrictions associated with different bacteria or organisms.
What you're saying is the restriction, in theory, won't be due to this contamination of the sediment after 10 years.
That's right. And so the 34.4 million, not million, there is 9,000, 600 cubic yards of intertidal sediment in near shore soils excavated, 1.3 acres of intertidal excavation, 282,000 cubic yards of sand and gravel to be brought in, and that's, that's a lot of trucks, and then, you know, you go out and read through the 178 acres of E and R and 949 acres of modern natural recovery. And this is, this topic is maybe it's a dear question, to protect the fish and the crabs and the wildlife that might eat them, the harbor is measured as a whole, the goals are in depth, and so there's an averaging, we'll go out and this part of long-term monitoring, the whole harbor will be evaluated, and concentrations of the harbor as a whole will be considered as to whether they're protective or not. And, and the goals, the cleanup goals are based on a background of the North Atlantic Peninsula, and because the chemicals we're dealing with are, have very low cleanup levels, and, and then monitoring the chemicals over time and the physical performance of the cap area. And so, as evolved, probably now the public comment period ends March 16th, and Ecology considers the comments are provided in slides of remedy and documents that have a cleanup action plan, and then the forming parties prepare the design and implement, including prepared detailed monitoring plans, and then the long-term monitoring, you know, after those six years of construction, long-term monitoring kicks in. This is just a little graphic you can find on the Ecology website that shows the process. Where, where the yellow turns to green, which is, which is great progress, and once you get a cleanup, you know, it's just about getting the work done. So, any questions?
Any questions, counsel? Thank you very much, that was a useful presentation. It's good to get the 10,000-foot view anyway of the RIFS.
Madam Mayor, counsel, if staff can add a few things, I think it's really important that we've spent a lot of time with city council in the past recapping, or talking about some of the really important goals to the city of Port Angeles on this cleanup, and ensuring ultimately that this is a complete cleanup, that we do it once, that we do it right, and we be responsible for cleaning up in a way that makes the best sense for our community. Also, counsel has really stressed the importance of sound science, making sure that if we're going to incorporate or have to pay any portion of those costs, that we do so based on sound science that's in the best interest of public health locally, but also science that makes sense to ensure that the techniques we're using are going to be lasting, and ultimately ensure that we don't have to come back and do this again in the future. And I think the timeliness of this project is pretty important. If you look at the Rainier project, knowing that that has been in place and moving forward since 1997, the fact that we started in 2012 and we're in virtually the same place, I think that's something that we should celebrate. We are committed to this project, as are the other PLPs, to move forward and see the harbor cleanup. And Attorney Blor may add additional principles that perhaps I missed.
The prior council and the port joint, they have agreed that there are some goals and principles that are important to our community. Nathan has mentioned most of them. I will say that in addition to those, one of the goals that we have, the prior city councils has emphasized was that the each potentially liable party should be responsible for their share of the contamination. So the people who contributed to the contamination should pay for that, their contribution to the contamination, people who contributed less should pay less. And so, we are, the parties that are involved in this are going forward with an allocation process, and we hope that that allocation process will be completed by June this year. So that was another goal that the city and the port joint agreed on. And other than that, I think Nathan has covered it pretty well.
Any further questions or comments? All right. So thank you again for your presentation, and let's move on now to late items. Any from staff?
Madam Mayor and counsel, we do have a couple items related to late items that are worth noting. I think first, I want to share that at this time, we are pulling item G1, and so that item will be removed from this evening's agenda, and we will be bringing that back to you in February. That was a street vacation that was being considered tonight. Secondly, we do have a late item relative to the Olympic Discovery Trail, the multi-agency reciprocal maintenance agreement is on your diast this evening, and please do take a look at that, and we would suggest that that be added late under other considerations. And then finally, I do want to apologize that we do have an error in the council packet relative to a duplication of some documents. Basically, pages I 9 through I 17 are a duplication of another section of the packet, so I do apologize for that, but effectively, you can consider pages I 9 through I 17 deleted and that they are duplicates. That is all we have for the items.
Okay, so I'm going to recommend we put the Olympic Discovery Trail issue as I 6, and then if you want to make a note on your agenda instead of I 9, the board's commissioning committee council appointments will start on page I 18. And do we have any late, late items from counsel? Yes, Councilmember Suggs.
Yeah, I want to add a late item for discussion, is snow removal for sidewalks for pedestrians. I, I saw a lot of unsafe situations, especially on the H Street bridges, and it's not just this year, but in years past I've seen it, and it needs to be addressed, and I'd like to add it to the.
Okay, so I would like to suggest that we might, if there's consensus from counsel, make that the future work session, so that we can address not just the, the snow removal for sidewalks, but sort of generally how we approach multimodal transportation in all of our, in everything that we do, so that we don't focus just on one piece, but that we might get a broader look at, at how we address pedestrians, bikes, et cetera, moving forward. So that could be a good work session potentially. Is there interest from counsel in, in doing that as a way to, at a minimum, address? Councilmember Suggs. Do we, can we just have consensus on that, or do we want a motion?
A motion would be nice, but consensus of four would be acceptable.
Mayor, just as a point, you can always say, without objection, that suggests we do a work session, and then if one of us disagrees, we can say objection.
Excellent.
And that way, it's clear that we'd have the opportunity. I agree with you that having that conversation today or having it as a work session.
Okay, would anyone like to make a motion? We have it as a work session.
I'll make the motion that we have a work session that discusses multimodal transportation that incorporates bikes, pedestrians, snow removal, as a work session.
Second.
Okay, any discussion, questions? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Thank you. So, we'll just wait to hear from you on a, on a good date to flip that.
Absolutely.
Thank you. All right, so moving on to the consent agenda, I did want to suggest, and I will take Councilwoman Warren's recommendation of approach here, that we add a section or an item I for the that the Crown Transit System Board of Composition appointment to the consent agenda. And if no one is opposed to that, I will... Excellent. All right, then I will read the consent agenda, but let me first add that, because otherwise I'll forget. So the consent agenda, the city council minutes of January 7th, 2020, expenditure report from January 1st, 2020 to January 10, 2020, in the amount of $832,708.39. Hospital 1923 grant for increasing residential building, Department of Ecology air monitoring agreement, utility wooden pole testing final acceptance, utility wooden power poles, material purchase, underground cable replacement final acceptance, Public Safety Advisory Board appointment, and Crown Transit System appointment for the Composition Board. I also just realized I forgot to ask if anyone wants to get pulled from the consent agenda, so slightly off the word. Okay.
I don't think I need to pull anything, but I do have a question on the Public Safety Advisory Board appointment.
Okay.
And that is, I know the applicant is also a city employee, also served in the advisory board, and I was curious what our policy is when somebody has a dual roles.
With regard to that particular position, as far as I know, we do not have a policy that addresses it either way. This is a employee who is not considered to be an officer of the city, and so we prohibited it on that basis either. So I know no prohibition to reply to this. We have, we, the chief, to discuss this with me.
I do not need to pull that out, thank you.
Thank you. All right.
I move the consent agenda as read.
Second. All right, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda as read, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, so we will move on to item G2. That is the authorization of tax credit supporting affordable housing needs available under Section 2 of Hospital 1406. And who's going to take that?
So Madam Mayor and counsel, this is a follow-up to two prior resolutions that were approved, moving forward with House Bill 1406. Ultimately, we have been working closely with Collin County as well as other jurisdictions in Collin County with the goal of making sure that everyone is taking the highest advantage of that tax credit. So before you this evening is the first reading of an ordinance which enables us to take advantage of the sales tax credit, which goes along with House Bill 1406. You will note in your packet that you do have two prior approved resolutions that were approved by council last year, and certainly, this does tie in with the sales tax initiative that was approved by voters, ensuring that we have a number of different tools in our tool belt as far as funding resources that we can apply towards housing. Attorney Gore may have additional elements to add to the presentation this evening, but again, tonight is for the first reading of the ordinance relative to that sales tax credit.
Attorney Gore, do you want to add?
I don't have anything to add, but I would be glad to answer your question.
All right, great. Well, let me start by reading the ordinance then. An ordinance of the city of Port Angeles imposing the local sales and use tax authorized under laws of 2019, Chapter 338, House Bill 1406, to be used for the affordable housing and provide, to be used for affordable housing and providing for other matters, properly releading thereto. So is there any discussion, or are there any questions from counsel? This is on page G10 in your packet. The ordinance itself is on page D12.
And we're just doing the first reading?
It is just a first reading, yes. And this is basically, if I understand correctly, the bootstraps to the process that we, or the suspenders of the process that we have started in order for us to close this circle and be able to take this tax credit. Right, so if there are no...
I just would say, first, thanks staff for being involved in this issue. I know you have many meetings where you've gone to the county commissioners and given public comment or been involved in meetings. I also am very interested, the county has said that they're, once this, you know, assuming that we pass this next meeting, that they're interested in working together, as we have now, I think the city of Port Angeles, the Squim, and Collin County all taking advantage of this tax credit or planning on it. So, you know, this is something that in the future, I think we might want to have a joint meeting of some sort to talk about what are we going to do with the money that's going to be collected, and it might mean that we have to make some complex and difficult financial decisions, but, you know, I don't have any comments on the drafting of this particular document in front of us. So thanks for all the work that's been done in this from every one of you.
Anyone else have questions or comments?
So I'll just jump in a little bit more here. This is part of the funding that the state's made available to address affordable housing as well as the measure that the people of Port Angeles passed last November, which provides a sizable amount of funds. The county is interested in collaborating with the city, with Squim as well, I think even Forks decided to take this tax relief or not, it's a very small amount for Forks, so there's some administrative issues there. I did meet with Commissioner Randy Johnson about housing affordability stuff last week, and he, like us, have a joint interest in going upstream and addressing housing affordability with this. And one of the challenges with how we use this money, when we're talking about housing affordability, is it's a really big problem, and it's not something that can solve just overnight. So I think there's a request from people in our community of all walks of life for some immediate solutions to people who are sleeping unsheltered in the streets tonight or in shelters in situations of homelessness, and that's a demand that our community is making on us, and that's not something that this is immediately going to solve, it's going to take some time. One of the issues there is that we need to bring down the price of rentals, since people are experiencing homelessness here in Port Angeles because the rent is too high. But we also cannot expect the housing affordability plan itself just bringing down rent to solve homelessness for people currently experiencing it. One of the things that folks who've worked in homelessness and housing affordability for a long time have counseled, elected officials like us, is don't expect trickle-down in housing policies to solve homelessness for particular individuals who are experiencing chronic homelessness. So in addition to just the general rental availability and affordability, we need to also specifically identify the needs of individuals who are unsheltered tonight and make sure we have housing that works for their needs. So we need both. I think this is part of that bigger picture, that upstream bring down the price of rentals, make housing more affordable, but that alone is not enough to address homelessness in our community. So it's a multi-product process, there's already a lot of things that we do as a community that are working along these lines. This is adding to that and hopefully helping to make a change in the right direction.
Thank you. Any other council members to chime in? All right, then I will continue this until the February 4th meeting, and we will move on. Thank you. So the next item is H1, that is the resolution ratifying a declaration of emergency, and that's on page, page 1 in your packet. And Director Hunter, are you going to take this?
Well...
Your name's on the list, so you're an obvious, an obvious to have.
Thank you. Good evening, counsel. This is before you due to a situation that really didn't sneak up on us as much as we were able to find this problem through routine maintenance and inspection of our sewer facilities. And honestly, it was a problem that turned, that went from bad to worse because of some of the conditions that we had out there, especially the amount of fill that we had to deal with, the rain that came down, big thanks to Brooke and Rook who stepped up and were able to get out there right away and give us a lot of support. I think that what we're finding is, you know, sewer mains that were installed in 1915 are probably a little outdated and are in need of some repair. But essentially, what we're doing tonight is we're just bringing forward and letting you know that on December 10th, 2019, city staff discovered the collapse of a section of 24-inch diameter concrete sand derrick sewer main under Lincoln Street between 4th and 5th. It was at that time that I contacted the city manager and asked him to declare an emergency. We initially took budget authority of 2019 wastewater fund in an amount not to exceed $100,000, and ultimately, that change order for $52,000 was required based off of the situation we found ourselves in. It's also important to note that there's still work to do in that area. Unfortunately, asphalt supplies were not readily available, and so we had to cold mix that area. And, you know, later contract, when the conditions are better and the plants are open and we'll get better pricing, we're going to finish that section off and hopefully be ready for our next project. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any question you might have.
All right, let me read the resolution quickly, and then we can get to questions and discussion. A resolution of the city council of the city of Port Angeles, Washington, affirming and ratifying the declaration of emergency issued by the city manager on December 11, 2019. Any questions or comments from counsel? All right, then I would entertain a motion.
I move to adopt the resolution of the city council of the city of Port Angeles, Washington, affirming and ratifying the declaration of emergency issued by the city manager on December 11, 2019.
Second.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, then all those in favor of adopting the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, now we move on to a presentation from our chief, Henry Duke, on hazard mitigation. And if I thought any of the other items would take less time than it will take you to set up, then I would do that, but I don't think that's the case, so.
Sorry. Technological challenge.
All right. It's not supposed to fall.
Put it in. Boy, I'm chief of computers. Clearly not. Just want to take a couple minutes to go over a plan that we're going to be bringing forward, a resolution in the next meeting for the council to approve. Basically, it's a hazard mitigation plan, multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan. So in 1988, federal government passed something called the Stafford Act. And the Stafford Act is the federal government's attempt to get states and local jurisdictions to be better prepared to mitigate hazards. And the way that the federal government does that is by basically encouraging people to do the right thing. And the way that they encourage them is by saying, if you don't do this, you're not going to be eligible for future grants. So that's basically what's happening. So we're encouraged to have a plan that talks about the risks that the jurisdiction is subject to. And so there's natural hazards like fires and floods and earthquakes, man-made risks, things like terrorist acts, things like that. We look at all the vulnerabilities that exist, and then we look at the different strategies that exist in order to deal with them. So again, it's a federal requirement, it's required by FEMA, and it's basically worked through the state of Washington Emergency Management Division. It's a plan that's required. There is a plan that's on the books right now, the last time that it was done was in 2010, and it's been updated now for 2019. And again, we have to have a plan like this in order to be available, in order to have the ability to go for future mitigation funding that comes up. And mitigation funding comes up all the time, and so when those events come up, we're going to apply for them, and then we're able to use this money to mitigate the things that we come up with in the plan. That doesn't necessarily mean that we're tied to the plan. Things change all the time. So even though the plan is here, we're going to adopt it, it doesn't mean that our number one priority is always going to be our number one priority. Things can change. I hate the term, but it's a living document. So in order to update the plan, Collin County takes the lead. We work under the umbrella of Collin County when it comes to emergency management. They took the lead, they hired a consultant, and they formed a mitigation planning team. We were a part of that team, the consultant was a part, and then all the local jurisdictions had people who were a part of that team. So Forks, Squim, the port, the school district, the hospital district, everybody, stakeholders throughout the county, all were a part of this team, and we met many times through 2019. We started in January 2019, there were five different formal workshops throughout the county, a couple here of Port Angeles, one in Squim, one in Forks, a lot of people from the community came, and they provided input into this. The city of Port Angeles certainly provided input as well. The city's input primarily came from Pollock Works and from emergency management itself. We had to look at all the different vulnerable cities in the city, we're clearly very cognizant of the natural vulnerabilities, vulnerabilities that exist, fire, flood, earthquake, winter storms, all the different things that can come up. And as a part of that, we came up with 11 primary items that we wanted to have addressing mitigation fire. Our top five are listed here. Again, there's, even though these are the top five, it doesn't mean that if we suddenly had the ability to have a million dollars in mitigation funding, that this is the way that it would be spent, but these are the things that have been identified. Clearly, one of the primary things that they've been looking at is we get water from the L-1 River that comes into the city, it comes in the one-way, it's a pipe, and that pipe is vulnerable to landslides, to earthquakes, et cetera. Anything that we can do to shore that pipe up and to mitigate the potential of it being affected by a earthquake or landslide is clearly important. Same thing with the pipe that goes east to the reservoir, for Collin PUD, Pbody Heights Reservoir has a burn around it, that's one of the things that we've identified for years we should be looking at. Upgrading the power supply to the sewer pump stations, and then there's a county flood assessment that is being worked on kind of continuously, and that's something that we need to look at as well. Like, I'm so sorry about my voice. Those are the top five, but again, there's nothing in concrete about those five. The plan was completed in December of 2019. It was submitted to FEMA and the state. It was just submitted largely in part at the very end of 2019 because one of the top priorities in the mitigation was funding for the resourcing of the airport runway. So for the port, it's a very high priority, so they wanted to make sure that they got in before the end of 2019. The plan was in, they went to FEMA, they went to the state, it's been approved by FEMA and by the state. And now, all of the jurisdictions that have signed on or have a part of the plan need to adopt the plan by resolution. So that's why it's coming to me now, so that in the next meeting, it'll be before you, you'll kind of review it, and then you'll adopt a resolution saying that you're okay with it. Again, I just, it's really important that you understand that even though you're adopting the plan, it's written, the plan's quite fluid, if something came up tomorrow that needed to change, you move up for it sometime. It would be definitely not right. Any questions? I have to go through this. This is the obligatory cat slide, by the way. I saw Bill did that earlier, thank you, Bill, I appreciate that. So if you have any questions, yeah.
This is just like a, I don't know if you know the answer to this, but like, how would you, how would you secure like the water mains, like what, berms around them? If it gives an earthquake?
You're way out of my depth. You're collapsing my building.
So yeah, there are a number of different techniques and ways that we could do that. In many cases, it's dealing with a completely different pipe material. We've given some preliminary thought to it, but a much larger conversation is, it'll come down to a funding issue.
Anyone else?
What, can you, what page were those five priorities that the city was looking at on your draft plan? Were the city, is there a specific page number on the plan? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, who chose them?
No, no, no. The plan that you showed up on your, those five areas, where at in the plan are they located?
They appear in the city portion of the plan.
Right.
And so I think they're on like the last page or something.
Okay, well, I was kind of, I was looking at your priorities that you were looking at, and I don't know if this is, I didn't see any priorities to secure transportation routes to care for any of those priorities. I mean, you have a lot of bridges throughout here, and if you have a bridge out, I don't, I just didn't see that as a priority to secure. Is there a secure transportation route in, that would be secured in the event of seeing an earthquake and the bridges are, I mean, is that a list, should that be listed as a priority, I guess I'm asking?
I think there may be, there's a difference between actual response to emergencies and mitigation on them. So really what we're, this plan is primarily focused on trying to prevent damage that can be foreseen, if that makes sense? As opposed to responding to something after it's happened? If I'm getting your question correctly.
So we might have a pipe from the Alwa to the water treatment plant that stays intact after a 9.0 earthquake, but having the power to run the plant after that, or a distribution system that doesn't leak to high heaven, that's a different story.
Yes, I think that's the point, yes, yes. It's a kind of a fine line, but it doesn't.
So if we don't like this plan, hypothetically, and we vote no next meeting, we can't really do that because we just held everyone's mitigation funds from the federal government hostage in doing that. So that's not really an option for us.
I don't see a way to answer that.
This is why you said it was flexible after, pardon? This is why you said it's really flexible after that area. Okay.
I guess I'm just concerned that there's a lot of magical thinking in how we respond to the 9.0 earthquake scenario. You know, there is no transportation, there is no water system, there is no power. You know, it's going to take neighbors digging each other out of their houses, and that's what we should be planning for in that scenario. There's a lot of other reasons why these are good things to plan for, but if that's a scenario we're using, I think we need to be realistic about the impact of it.
I think you're absolutely right. I mean, the 9.0, you're right, it's magical thinking. There's no better way to say it than that. And to mitigate everything that could potentially come up because of that, I think would be, clearly would be impossible. I mean, everybody recognizes that. And so what we were trying to do when we were developing this plan was looking at the things that were reasonably manageable, that we could reasonably manage, reasonably expect the federal government to potentially help us with, if that makes sense. It's a tough, it's a tough call.
I also appreciated how you talked in the plan about other things than the 9.0 earthquake, like the windstorm we had, like the typhoon in 2016 or something. I didn't even know it was called the typhoon. But for other council members, if you did want, in the email that he sent, the City of Port Angeles starts on page 169. So if anybody really did want to dig into the details, page 169, that's when you get into the City of Port Angeles jurisdiction-specific annex of the Collin County Hazard Mitigation Plan. Other than that, I don't have any comments.
Go ahead.
I guess I want to follow up on a comment Lindsay made, and maybe this is something that you guys can find out for us. I mean, if we do come back and say that there's sections that we don't agree with, what are the next steps? I mean, I don't think technically we're going to be holding up all of the mitigation plan. I think just maybe specific sections associated with City of Port Angeles. So I guess maybe finding out, you know, in that scenario? I mean, I think as council, we would still like to have options available to us instead of saying, we either have to vote for it, or you're going to hold up everything. I've heard that too often, and I don't think that's a correct answer. So if you wouldn't mind getting back to us and letting us know, you know, if council did decide that they wanted some changes, what would be the next steps?
The next step?
Well, yeah, I mean, next steps in the overall, can you go to, what do you do? Do you go to the county and say, the city council would like to make some changes, here they are, or?
Well, if you're, what you're asking is, what's the plan? Is it adopted by resolution? So you're talking about the next step after that?
She's asking.
I'm so sorry, sorry to interrupt you.
She's asking if we, if for some reason, next week, council said, no, we are not going to pass the resolution. She's just asking if staff can come back and maybe come to that meeting, prepared to articulate for us what the implication would be if we vote no. And I would like to add to that. If, just to articulate for us, maybe we say, yes, we'll pass it, and we'd like to have some more conversation about what's in it, since it is a living document. So maybe we can, it can be a both and moving forward.
I honestly don't know the answer to that question. If we do not adopt the resolution, I believe the implication is that we are not eligible to go for future mitigation grant funding until we do. That said, if you adopt the resolution, which you want to change things that exist within the plan, we absolutely have the ability to do that anytime we want. All we're doing is basically saying, this is the plan as it stands as of February 4th, 2020. We're adopting that plan as it stands, but on February 5th, 2020, you can add 10 things to the plan, and there's nothing stopping us from doing that. Does that help?
So council, if I can just add to that, we'd be happy to do some additional research as far as what process would look like if it's a plan that ultimately council is unhappy with. We'll take a look at the steps that could be utilized to get a plan ultimately approved that is acceptable to council, and we'll take a look at what those options are. One thing that would greatly help us between now and the next meeting is to the extent that council is able to digest the plan and share with us what your concerns are, that'll help us with a magnitude perspective of, hey, do we need to just do a small tweak to the resolution that amends the plan slightly, or do we need an overhaul of an entire chapter? And getting a feel for that would really help. So to the extent that council members are able to digest the plan and take some time to look at it and provide comments to it. I want to caveat that with that, with the fact that we recognize this is an enormous plan, it's a very large document, and I know that may take some time for council members.
Councilmember.
In the effort of helping, so I would like to just say, thanks for giving us a presentation before you asked us to pass the resolution. That is helpful to address, you know, I think, a reasonable point that council makes. Secondly, if council did want to do some digesting, I think the relevant part for us would start on page 209, which is page 4-7. It's the mitigation strategy. And so what I feel has happened, and so it starts with a view of the 2010 mitigation strategy, what's happened in the last 10 years, and whether or not these projects have happened or not. But that's, I think that a lot of that is just pulled from our existing planning documents, where, if I'm not mistaken, they're looking at our cap facilities plan and our, you know, conference and planning documents to say, and then just doing basic prioritization. So I don't think that there's going to be a lot that we're going to find objectionable, or that we're going to have a really, I mean, I'm sure that if we want to get into the weeds of the policy, we could have, you know, relevant input. And not to just say that we should give staff a pass, but I mean, if we want to have relevant, we should have it. But I'm guessing that there's not going to be a lot objectionable that we would find. But if we do want to dig in, like I said, that's where it starts. Maybe it's, yeah, page, it's actually 5-1 of the appendix, page 209, in the online PDF that was sent to us in the email.
Thank you. Anyone down this way?
So my question, which is purely hypothetical, and Chief Dubuque, thank you for entertaining it, is I think we've made a lot of good progress in the last few years of not having the council just be a rubber stamp for decisions that have already been made, but for the official validation of them by the city council. And I want to make sure that we continue in that direction. I certainly missed an announcement somewhere along the way that this was in the works, and there are public sessions. I just searched our website, I don't see it in the top 10 results when I search hazard mitigation. I obviously missed it in, you know, probably not reading over the fire department work plan. I missed it along the way. So that's my fault. But I also have experiences in the last couple of years of advisory boards or the council being handed something at the 11th hour and said, it's already ready, just approve it. And I want us to get away from that. So I appreciate this presentation ahead of next week. I think I would have appreciated a presentation six months ago, saying, you know, we're all going to start the plan, here's what it looks like, here's how it affects the city, and will we bring this to you at the beginning of 2020? That way, it feels to me like we, as a legislative body, are not just adopting a policy that is handed to us without really the opportunity to weigh in.
Right, I just want to also say, having recently read at least a portion of Five Days at Memorial, which is about a hospital in New Orleans, that when you read this, I agree that there is the, as has already been brought up, that issue of the magical thinking of a 9.0 earthquake. Doesn't mean we shouldn't be thinking about it, but also I think it's important that because that is our, what everyone keeps coming around to, that we don't miss the forest or the trees as we read through this. And what are the things we've had significant snowfall two years in a row, and how are we dealing with that? We've had a windstorm, a power outage, so that's been mentioned, but I just want to remind people, I think it's important to keep both of those things in context as you read through it when we come back to talk about it.
All right, thank you very much. Is your kitten like an eternal kitten, or does it, I'm just curious?
This kitten is now a carrot, and unfortunately, he's a jerk. He was raised without a mom, and raised without siblings, and turned into a complete jerk. So he's sweet and cute, I love him, but he's a horrible carrot.
So keep writing the kitten pictures, then.
But if we could avoid calicos, I have a bad chew at calicos, it's great.
Thank you.
Can I make a suggestion? If staff wants to or thinks it'd be relevant to put the mitigation implementation plan, table 5-4, into our next packet when we do this, that might be helpful for council to see the actual projects that are, you know, that is our mitigation implementation plan, rather than obviously we're not going to put a 400-page document in that. And staff can make, obviously, can make those decisions, that's just a suggestion.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we will move on to item I-3, which is the strategic plan discussion, which you will find on page I-1, the printed packet. And city manager, Wes?
Madam Mayor and council, tonight, before you, you have a discussion of the strategic plan, the 2019 through 2020 strategic plan. This was a document that was created about a year ago, actually a little over a year ago, through a city council retreat that really looked at making sure that we're balancing different projects among different departments, that really looked at what council priorities are relative to this organization and this organization's forward direction. It was really important to city staff recognizing that we have four new council members, a new majority on council, that we really respect the fact that there might be new opinions or a different approach intended relative to strategic plan, as well as the direction that this organization might be going in. So for that reason, it's really helpful for city staff to basically have a heads up of what differences there are, to know whether there's a desire to have significant change when it comes to our strategic plan, which is a really important guiding document for all of our work plan items. Or is it something that we're good with, we want to move forward with the plan as is? So tonight, staff has provided approximately three options for discussion, and one would be moving forward with the strategic plan as it was designed, with the caveat that it incorporates larger changes to the municipal code, which have already been considered by this council and talked about with this council at your last meeting, as well as in a work session, I believe, in late November. That would be one option, is to move with the plan forward with the plan as is. A second option would be if the new council decides, or even existing council members decide that there is merit to modifying the strategic plan in some way, with minor modifications to the plan, we would suggest that we do a council work session. Probably the meeting in February designed for work sessions would be the time that we would schedule that, and that would be for minor amendments. If there's a desire among council members to move forward with a complete redo of the strategic plan, effectively create a new strategic plan, our recommendation would be we have a facilitated retreat dedicated to that creation of a new strategic plan. I think it's really important, again, to state that it really has an impact on the direction that we're going as an organization, but wanted to make sure council had every opportunity to have that discussion before we make any decisions relative to a future retreat, or relative to future work sessions, or even strategic plan directives.
Thank you. Before I open the floor for discussion and questions, I just wanted to hopefully frame the conversation in a way that is useful. I think it's useful to hear, particularly from new council members, but from anyone, if there are some changes that you would like to see. So, and maybe without spending a lot of conversation about the merits of those things, just letting us know, what are some specific issues you would like to address, if there are changes you would like to make? Because then as a body, we can decide how we want to move forward. And so my hope is that we will have some conversation, and then someone will make a motion to choose alternative number one, two, or three based on our conversation. So why don't I just start at this end? And council member, you would like to give us your opinion of the strategic plan?
Yeah, well, I love the strategic plan. I think that while the actions for 2019, staff absolutely crushed it. So if we can get like an updated strategic plan with all the great accomplishments that staff has done last year, like take it out, so we can just see what's left over, and then come up with some more actions for this company, it would be great.
Councilmember McColl.
I agree, I did like the plan. Went over it on Sunday, I did it very, pretty thoroughly. There was, I just have a few questions on, I don't know about some of the items, if they've been completed or not. May I ask one for Chief Smith? I saw the police explorer post, is that something that's going on? Oh, he's not. Do you know, does anyone know, at home staff, if that's something that's still going on, or if it?
So council, I apologize, we did provide an updated sheet, I believe it was presented on the December 17 council meeting. So I apologize to the new council members who probably didn't get that update sheet, but we can probably put our hands on that sheet rather quickly and share that with council as far as what's been completed today, as well as status report of each of the items that occurred in 2019. I think we have that readily available, I can't promise that we can have it at this meeting tonight, but we might see what we can do.
And I also agree about maybe putting something on here about the climate action plan, we can start working on that immediately. Other than that, I really liked the strategic plan, I went over it as thoroughly as I could, I haven't opened the 400-page document on the mitigation plan. It's a lot easier to go over, so thank you.
All right. Council, Deputy Mayor Carr.
I also really appreciated this plan, I think it's very detailed in that
I think it's very detailed in that the large objectives and the goals and strategies, I think, are really solid and well thought out. But when it comes to the action and measures, I think there are some ways that we could update this, specifically in relation to both climate and homelessness. Since we have completed the housing needs assessment, I think, I think there could be more discussion about how we actually diversify our housing options and what concrete actions we're going to be taking as a city to provide leadership and fulfill our responsibility to make sure that every person has safe housing. And so I think that's one way we can provide some updates here. And then in relation to climate, I think under number three, exemplify excellence in government and community leadership, this is one way in relation to climate action, specifically in our downtown and in our housing policies, that we can really provide leadership in our, in our county and along the, our entire region and in America, showing that, that we're taking the issues of climate change and climate mitigation seriously, so making sure that we can update policies to reflect, to reflect our community's needs.
Thank you. Councilmember Sharon Morris?
So I agree with the comments so far, and I don't want to characterize or put folks in a box, but it sounds like we're leaning toward number two of the three options, meaning minor modifications, work session material, not necessarily a whole day. I would agree with that, if that's where the rest of the council wants to go. I agree with the two subject areas that Councilmember Carr mentions. The edits from, from Chad are things that we tried to work on to a large extent, and I think giving us a strategic plan would help. We have been talking either at the UAC level, or at the council level, or vote, about the goal of purchasing 100% clean energy. That's one of the specifics. We began planning for a community solar project that unfortunately did not happen, even though we did make efforts toward that. Explore enhanced incentives and opportunities for decentralized renewable energy use. I think that's something we could do as a city. I would want to add to that, be more proactive on conservation programs, because conserving energy is our first renewable energy source. And when people talk about $400 a month utility bills, I'm thinking their house isn't insulated properly. So those, and then also, we need to keep working on housing and on the ground, what's that going to look like? So I agree with Councilmember Carr on that one as well. I think we could accomplish those two changes at a work session, particularly if we kind of compare the version which Manager West said is in our December 17 packet, is at the end there, cross out what's been done, kind of assess, and perhaps each department also looks at their feasibility, what they have left, because I know that's a concern from staff, is making sure that, you know, one department isn't necessarily overwhelmed. We love to become planning, of course, because, you know, that's where we think too, so it's a compliment. And, but yeah, I would like to see us move forward with reviewing this. If everyone's in favor of the objectives, goals, and strategies staying the same, I think that's a good sign that we are, you know, in kind of a long-term trend that we can keep stable. Big picture, this is a, this is a work plan, really, for the next two years. Now, we call, but the departments come up with their work plans, but this is an intermediate plan for us. There's the comprehensive plan, and that's created by the community with a lot of assistance and facilitation by the city. And this is our way of saying, what do we want to implement from the comprehensive plan in the next two years? And then we look to the department work plans for the details of that. So this strategic plan sits as a two-year kind of action plan for the comprehensive plan. It doesn't sit out there alone. We want this to be tied to the comprehensive plan, of like, well, what do we actually intend to get done in the immediate timeframe? So I, we spent some time with the objectives, goals, and strategies last year. Those are something that work well for the new council members, and that's a really good sign.
Thank you. Councilmember French?
This is interesting. I would say that one thing I think that we're going to see very quickly is that if we want to do a work session, or, you know, which I'm not opposed to, I, just to start off with, I'm fine with either of the three options, depending on how the rest of the council feels. Obviously, I participated in the creation of this strategic plan, so I was pleased with the effort that we got, and I was pleased with the deliverables that we had in 2019. But this would require us to get to a level of specificity, and I think that's going to be a challenge for the, for the council. I think that we can do that, but that's, I just want to make sure that we're understanding what we're going to have to bring. The fact that a lot of these things will be crossed off because we did them doesn't mean that we get extra capacity to squeeze more things in this next year. And on our plate for this next year are a couple of big things, including the code rewrite, the, you know, the beginning of that process going forward. So obviously, I'm, I would love to talk about, you know, housing, especially homelessness and climate, like those are all great goals. Just the specificity that we're going to require to, you know, craft new actions or measures is going to be a challenge. And I would also point that, you know, there are ongoing processes that are happening in many of these areas. We are going to have to do some planning on Proposition One funding, when it does start to collect, what that's going to look like. We're going to have, you know, that's future, that's, we can't do anything with that right now, because it's, we haven't started taxing. I totally would love to see more discussion about that housing needs assessment and the action plan that came out of that. There's a lot in there, and that definitely gets to that level of specificity that gets very, very difficult, which I loved with Gageon. But, so I guess, I just want to warn the council, this is a big project, and I'm ready for it, but it's going to require us to get down to details very quickly.
Thank you. Councilmember Settle?
I am also leaning towards, again, the recommendation of number two, strategic plan, minor modifications. I think that with what Mike just talked about, that the actions that were, that aren't completed yet, I still think with some of these topics that have been put out there, I think that there's some opportunities in the code rewrites and stuff, that we can possibly see how, like, issues or how we, our policies towards climate change and how to integrate those in a policy rewrite might be a good opportunity. It's been a discussion at council for a while. There's been resolutions that have been passed, there's committees that, there's a committee that has been formed. So I think that there's opportunities in what's already in the plan, the strategic plan. I do feel that making major changes to the plan, I would steer away from, because I think that the plan was well-written out, and it provides guidance to our, the city staff on where we want to go for these couple of years. And then following this strategic plan, there's going to be a clean slate where you could really build and develop on a larger, those larger issues. But I think that there's some modifications that can be made that are small enough, and with what's already in the plan that's going to be occurring, that will pair well with each other. So my recommendation is number two. So I just want to say, great job, staff and, and in council that came before me to put together the existing strategic plan that we have in front of us. It helps us, but I also don't want to make city do a 360, like, oh, where are we going now? You know? But that's my recommendation.
Thank you. I appreciate everyone's thoughts, and I would agree that I like the idea of giving you all time to have a little more conversation around the strategic plan and maybe finessing some of those things. I agree with Councilmember French that there, we're going to need to come prepared to that work session with some very specific things, but also with some flexibility, so that we're making this a group process. So that being said, I would entertain a motion if someone would like to make one about how we move forward.
I, I make a motion that we, you know, that we move forward with a strategic plan, number two, that will include minor modifications, accomplish it through a work session with council at our next available time. That's my motion.
A second.
Okay. And just for clarification, staff, it looks like the next available will be February, so for planning purposes.
Madam Mayor, that is correct. I do have some additional comments before that, if that's possible.
Go ahead.
So council, really appreciate the good discussion tonight on the strategic plan. It's really valuable for staff to hear that input and to know where the desired outcome is relative to this plan. It has been an effective document, and we were able to distribute to you the same document that we provided on December 17. So you now have that in front of you, so that you can take a look at those projects that were completed or not completed. In a second, I'd like Chief Smith to, to respond to Councilmember McCollum's question on that specific project, which I know is in the heat on the sheet, but perhaps Chief Smith can provide some additional details. In particular, I want to really highlight what Councilmember French shared, and that as we anticipate a work session to look at minor modifications, staff would not anticipate that we add new projects to that list unless we're removing other projects. I think it's really important to remember, this was a two-year plan with scheduling out projects for 2019, with separate projects scheduled for 2020. We've added to that plate a very large project in the form of our Port Angeles municipal code, which really wasn't even contemplated in that plan itself. So I think if you look at the different workloads that were attributed to each department in that plan, it was very carefully worked out in the past plan. I think that's something that we'll want to do. If there's a desire to add new projects, we're not saying no, it's just important that we make sure we continue to see balanced workloads in each department, and that the tasks that are put on as far as actions are actually ultimately actionable and realistic within the timeframe that we're talking about.
Thank you. And before we hear from Chief Smith, we should probably vote.
No?
No?
This session, please.
Okay, so you have more questions?
I have things to say.
Okay, very good. Go ahead.
Okay. So my concern is when we get to the end of 2020, which is apparently still this year, and we finish the strategic plan, and we say, okay, great, and then, I don't know, do you all just be like, okay, we're ready, tell us what to do? So one way to do the strategic plan would be to have it be a two-year strategic plan, so the city staff are able to plan out what are things going to look like, how is this workflow going to go, how's this project going to go? But roll it every year. So what we could do is have a strategic plan, we just created at the beginning of 2019, a 2019-2020 plan, and this year, we create a 2020-2022 plan. We do that every year. In that way, there's, there's knowledge among all of us of what are we working on this year, and what are we working on next year? So the proposal on the table is not that. What the proposal on the table is, is basically, let's finish the 2019-2020 plan, and I'm good with that proposal. But what I'd like to do, and I think that this makes sense, so that we enter 2021 with knowledge of what our priorities are out of the comprehensive plan, is that sometime in the fall of 2020 of this year, we look at having that retreat, that number three option of taking the time to come together without the time constraints of a work session, and flush out basically at that point what the 2021-2022 plan would look like, so that as we go into 2021, we have that plan in hand. Now, we do some of that through the capital facilities plan and through the budget, but the strategic plan should be tied into that. And I don't want us to get into 2021 and not have the strategic plan guiding, I mean, really guiding staff, is what it is. So I'm in favor of this motion, as long as we follow it up and don't just let the strategic plan expire as a tool. I think it's been a really valuable tool. I appreciate it, and I hope that staff will appreciate it as well, and the rest of the council, and so I do want to make sure that we continue with this comprehensible two-page guidance document for the near term.
Any other comments?
Was that an amendment that you made to the motion?
No, I was not amending the motion, although you're welcome to if you want. I was just thinking that we have a work session in the spring, and then later in the year, we should look at what's the strategic plan for 2021, 2022.
Madam Mayor, if I could quickly speak to that, I apologize for interrupting. And I think I really appreciate Councilmember Sharon Warren's point, because what he does is ultimately pull things out that are already contemplated in some ways by staff. Those seated council members who were here last year will remember that we brought that up early on as we were talking about the strategic plan, that in 2020, in October of this year, we would plan to do a strategic planning retreat to set the plan for the next two years. So I apologize for new council members, that's new information, and again, appreciative to Councilmember Sharon Warren for pulling that out of my head so that it was communicated to all of you.
Thank you. Councilmember French?
The only last point I would like to make is, when we did that retreat, the document that we created really was a collaborative document between not just the council, but also the staff. And so this is not something that we will be able to, you know, run the ship completely alone on when we have our work session. This is going to require us to have that productive conversation with staff to understand the limits, as Nathan said, to understand the capacity, and to make sure that we're not, you know, overloading departments. So that's just a comment that I think is really important to understand, that this has to be a collaborative process between council and staff, and I really look forward to that collaboration.
Thank you. Anyone down here? All right. So we have a motion on the table to select option, alternative number two. So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. That was a good conversation and discussion. Yes.
Chief Smith, I got a document that shows this was completed, so thanks for the document.
Does that satisfy your... Okay, thank you. Excellent. All right, then we will move on to item I five, because item I four was in the consent agenda. I five is the board's commission and committee council appointments, which is actually on page I 18 of the printed packet. So I guess I didn't mean this one. I sat down with the city manager, and we tried our best to plug people in where they requested, while also honoring that sort of right of first refusal for returning council members. I did hear a comment, oh, you're on a lot of things, but that's true, although many of them meet very infrequently, and so I didn't want to give up all of the things, all of the committees that I was working on before. So I don't know if anyone has any concerns that they would like to raise at this time, but I also want to take a moment to ask if anyone, maybe there's more than one of you who would be interested in being on the pop-up board, because we got the invitation to do that this evening, and with a formal invitation from their board, it makes sense for us to see if someone is interested in doing that and make that appointment along with the rest of the appointments. So I would like to hear...
I would be very interested in...
Okay. Councilmember Meyer? Anyone else would be interested in doing that? Okay, now I'm going to put it, put that on the list and put an X next to your name.
And you can put me down as an alternative, that this one is needed.
Okay. Thank you. That's great. All right, so... All right, so does anyone have any questions or concerns about the assignments?
Yeah, just the Lodging and Tax Advisory Committee is something that I sort of, I really enjoyed going to while I was running for this seat, and I'd like to continue going to that. I missed the last one, but...
Is there, we haven't, I don't know if we've had an alternate before, I could certainly appoint you as an alternate, and you could continue to go unless Councilmember French has an interest in trading or taking that one back.
I don't think there's an alternate because it's an RCW issue.
Correct.
Obviously, it's an open public meeting that Brenda is welcome to come to. I don't necessarily have anything to say, other than I'm happy to serve on it, that council needs to make this decision. It's one that I am very interested in, but at the same time, I have some amount of anxiety because it's a big, it's, you know, it's an important advisory committee.
Clarification, do you want it or not?
I serve as the mayor. The mayor's a pleasure.
No, 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 no.
I want it, if that helps. I didn't want it, I just, you know, I don't want to, I don't know. It's a tough, it's a big one, and I think that it'd be...
So one recommendation I can make, which may not satisfy you at all, but I will make it anyway, is as we move forward with these, people may find that things don't work as well for them as they thought, and Councilmember French may go to one and say, you know what, actually. So if you're open to leaving it the way it is with the possibility that something may shift, I know you have a fair amount of time, and there are probably some places that you could have...
I mean, if Councilmember French is always serving on the thing, you know, the first right refusal is...
So number one, I don't think there's a first right refusal, that's my personal opinion, but the mayor previously had this position, and Mayor broke.
Yeah, I remember.
So I'm in favor of leaving it the way, just for ease, leaving it the way it is, adding you to Papa, and then maybe you and Councilmember French can revisit that at some point in the future, and if you want to make a change...
And I'm also open to input, like, I'm not...
And yes, while you wouldn't be sitting here, you're always welcome to go.
Right, right.
From a public comment. All right, are there any other questions or comments?
I wanted to just clarify the invitation for Papa and Mr. Wojcicki, I guess if the mayor would allow it. I guess I just want to clarify, is that a request for the council to have a formal council appointee, or is that an informal invitation for somebody on the council to be on Papa's board? They're slightly different in that, I don't know exactly which email address would be involved if it's a formal appointment, whereas if it's informal...
Or they can have a vote.
You know, is it kind of just making sure that Papa knows what it wants here, and that we're not misinterpreting that request?
That's a good question, and you're welcome to come in and answer it, please, so that we move forward appropriately.
This is a formal request for a council member appointed, or a council-appointed council member.
Right. Yeah, thanks.
Excellent. Thank you.
In that case, I move to adopt the city council assignments as presented in the packet with the addition of a committee appointment for the Peninsula Area Public Access with Councilmember Meyer as the representative and Councilmember McCallum as the alternate.
Any further discussion?
I just want to thank you for putting me in a lot of meetings during the day. That's going to save you a lot of time. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember French?
So the other thing that I would like to point out, so I think that Clough County Board Health is a new term for Port Angeles, where I think a different city of representative.
Yes, it rotates.
So I have attended those meetings, and not regularly, but if anybody wanted input on that board, I'm open to that, and we could probably track down who the previous person was, and we could talk to them. Other than that, Lindsay, I don't know if I've talked to you about Melissa's task force, the PA forward I was appointed to before, I'm the alternate now, so if either the mayor or the deputy mayor wants input on that, I'm welcome, I'm open to that. And I think that was the extent of mine. But we should definitely have those conversations with each other and talk about, you know, what our goals are, what has been going on in those boards, not just their council reports, but, you know, sometimes one-on-one meetings if we need to.
Yes, I think that's a great suggestion. So if you are a current, a returning council member who is no longer on the committee that you were on or are serving with new people, we can make a point of reaching out now that we've, once we approve this, to get your folks up to speed. That would be great. And different groups have responded to the snow in different ways. So as an example, Clough Transit just canceled their January meeting, whereas Faro postponed their meeting. And so that will be important for people to know as well. So we have a motion on the table, and a second. Is there any further discussion?
All right, yeah, Mike, if you want, Councilmember French, if you want, Councilmember French, if you want to like switch any other one for the, if you wanted the utility advisory committee, I would be more than happy to swap that out to Lodging, Tax Advisory Committee. I know you're on a lot of economic committees, so I don't want to break up the trifecta.
So, I mean, I've also been, I've been asked by people to be on that committee, and so I think that for this one term, I would like to do it, and then I would love to have a conversation with you in person about like what, since you've been attending it for the last some time, I would love to hear from you and work with you. I really think I should take it, even though I do have some amount of anxiety about it.
And again, these are not set in stone. So as an example, I ended up on Clough Transit because someone else was appointed, and it turned out that the meeting time just absolutely didn't work, so they appointed me instead. So of course, we want to make a commitment, but if something really doesn't work, we can bring it back to council and make a different amendment.
There is also some value in the fact that I'm also appointed to the Olympic Peninsula Tourism Commission, those things work in concert with each other.
Yes, that was...
And I would love to talk to Brenda about that, too, if he's interested, because it's another important one.
All right, so any more discussion? All right, so all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Thank you for your flexibility. All right, moving on to, oh, number six. I six, which is the staple memo that was on the die, is not included in the packet, that is the multi-agency reciprocal maintenance agreement. So who's going to take that?
I'm going to take that one, Mayor. Good evening. We apologize for the late item, but we can have an urgent issue prior to the next city council meeting that we need to address. So over the last few weeks, you guys know that I have been sending you updates on what we have going on with the Olympic Discovery Trail after multiple wind and rainstorms. Currently, with the trail shut down, we really have three major issues. Really, we have one section that's completely about two-thirds undermined. We have about a 100 to 200-yard slide in between that, and further down towards the Morse Crick section, we have a section in the bank that's a-roading. What we've been doing since that issue is have an engineer, engineering working on the project, securing permitting, and doing the design work. Since then as well, Director Hunter and I have been meeting with the county to look at options of having their crews assist ours. In 2003, there was an inter-local agreement put together that allows us to do that type of work for under $50,000. So tonight, we're asking you guys to approve, City Manager West will sign a work task request with the county not to exceed $50,000. I'd like to note that as this is kind of a short-term repair, kind of an emergency, as we go through the CFP process, we want to start talking about long-term maintenance of the trail and how we're going to try and take care of this community asset, because it is one of those things, and I'll be doing a presentation next month, that's one of the few things that keep me up at night. It's one of those ongoing maintenance concerns that for a department of my size, we have a hard time maintaining. And so we have further discussions about that as well. With that, Director Hunter and I can answer any questions.
Real quickly, I just want to mention, because I've been asked by a number of people, why is the city maintaining a section of trail that is not in the city limits? And so the answer that I received, which I think is important just to state out loud so that people know, is that we actually purchased that portion of the trail, and it belongs to the city, despite the fact that it is not in the city limits.
Correct. That was, started in the mid-'90s and completed in early 2000s, and it was a direction from the city council to make sure that project was completed, so we do want it all the way to the Morse Crick Tresle.
Thank you. I think that's important clarification for the public to understand why it is that we're responsible and wanting to take the time to fix it.
Correct.
Any questions or comments from council?
Is there, I'm sorry, is there like, do we have a overall plan for how to like tighten up and secure the Olympic Discovery Trail? Is there like a retaining wall, or any kind of plans on the book on how we're going to make sure that, I know we can't stop Mother Nature, but to help lessen these kind of like slides and stuff?
The slide issue has been ongoing since I've been here. I mean, if you can, you could go down to the trail during the summertime, and you still see water pouring out of the side, the hillside, especially the major areas we have is between 3.0 and 4.0 mile markers. That's always been an issue. As far as long-term maintenance, as far as retaining walls, stuff like that, there hasn't been discussions about that because of the cost that is involved in that. But what we are going to do during the CFP process is start developing some plans of how we're going to start mitigate some of the issues that we're having. I can tell you, over the last two years, I've seen more, I always thought it would be a slide that takes out the trail. Over the last two and a half years, I've seen more damage from high tides and windstorms than I've, since I've been here, so...
Okay, I just want to clarify really quickly for anyone who doesn't know, the CFP is the Capital Facilities Plan. And Councilmember Sutcliffe, next.
Well, I guess I'm, thanks for your hard work with maintaining it, with maintaining the Olympic Discovery Trail, the section that the city owns and stuff, but I am concerned, again, this is a temporary fix. I don't know. I don't mind temporary fixes as long as we know that we have a permanent long-term fix. And I would like to know more about, instead of continuing to throw money towards temporary fixes, towards a long-term fix, with the possibility, and I don't even know if it's possible, like trying to look it up on the map, but is there, I don't even know if there's a desire to do this, I don't know if I'm shooting myself in the foot, but moving that trail away from the shoreline and bypassing the area that slides, and finding an alternate route that maybe is not as picturesque with you with the near shore. I know that there's a lot of issues associated with that, you have slopes that you have to, or priorities that you have to maintain. Is there land accessible, and possibly looking at acquisition of a section of land, or is there a section of land that the city already owns that the trail could be moved or relocated for that section? Again, I like to look at long-term, and I know that continued maintenance towards a short-term fix is not the ideal solution. I've been there, I've done that, and I don't like those. So that's my cast.
So I'll answer the first one, and then I'll put it over to Director Hunter, that this is more of a quick fix, not a short-term solution fix, so with that, I'll pass it over to him.
So I think that there's two main things that we need to think about as it relates to this trail system. One is going to be the difficult conversation of funding. It's just a reality that we have to deal with, and really, you know, reach out to get some higher-level policy decisions on how we can fund a certain direction. What that certain direction is, is kind of to be determined from my perspective. One of the things that I think that the city can do to try and mitigate the delay in our ability to respond to these issues that come up like this, is going to be through the engineering department's ability to contract with folks who could come out and make repairs on things like this a lot faster than we have been able to in the past. The reason that we're reaching out to the county quite strictly is because they have a level of expertise in working in those environments, and we want to capitalize on that. Number two, we think that it's going to be an amazing opportunity for us to participate in projects together, which I think is really important, especially for a community that's kind of at the end of the trail up here. And number three, we simply do not have the trucking capability to effectively run that project as quickly as we have to, as the fish window is closing on February 16th, we will no longer be able to do the work. Lastly, we are working on a process right now with the Department of Ecology, Fish and Wildlife, and the Army Corps of Engineer to get permits set up to where we can do this ongoing maintenance in a more timely fashion, and it's not this, oh my gosh, there's an emergency, now let's sit around and wait for a 30-day permitting window. And so being proactive out of the engineering department is going to speed up our response and also give us some familiarity with how we should be restoring these sections. In a lot of cases, there's going to be mitigation requirements for some of the impacts that we have when we're talking about new armoring or hardening, and that's even a bigger conversation as to whether or not we want to go that route. I do not disagree with any of the comments that I've heard from my perspective, and that I think a level of effort to come up with a very small, concise, comprehensive plan for the trail is our best solution if we want to appropriately be able to tackle this thing in the next coming decade. Additionally, I will just say that, you know, I don't think that Director Delafosse's department has had support in the past from engineering, and it's clear that this is a huge community asset that needs to be planned for in the correct manner. And it's our hope to get out there and fix this thing in the next couple of weeks.
Thank you. Councilmember Sherman Warren?
So we're talking about armoring and reinforcement and mitigation for infrastructure that's primary purpose is so that people can go out and recreate a beautiful place. That infrastructure is built between a marine bluff that's wet a lot of the year and erodes, and the beach, and the rising tide, it's not a sustainable place for infrastructure. I mean, does anyone really see that long-term sustainability there without just increasing the armoring, increasing the rip route, and, you know, reinforcing the bluff? And pretty soon, what are you walking on? You're not walking on, you know, a trail that's, you know, next to the beach with, you know, salmon berries and natural vegetation to your right, you're walking on like an armored asphalt platform. What are we losing with that? We're losing a sandy beach, and, you know, as folks know, like, it's really great to walk on a sandy beach as well, especially if you could walk, you know, just past Ennis Creek and out onto a sandy beach for a few miles, just right outside of town. So I realize what I just said is probably going to get me flamed up in the paper tomorrow, but it's, I think, a serious question for us. When you talk about long-term sustainability, is that the right infrastructure in the right place compared to what we're losing by having it there? It was originally railroad grade at a time when people didn't think about where fish spawned, or how much bluffs eroded in this area, or kind of how much it would cost to maintain that kind of, that kind of transportation corridor. So I think it does merit serious consideration as a community of what we want there and how much we're willing to pay for it as a community with taxpayer dollars, and what we're giving up by having it there compared to what we could have otherwise, without a lot of maintenance costs. I mean, a sandy beach generally maintains itself.
Thank you. Anyone down here? All right. Okay, Councilmember French?
So this is a difficult conversation. I think that we've had some council members make some very good points. What I would like to say from, I would like to make an argument that, you know, as Lindsay said, in decades past, people didn't take any of these environmental considerations into effect. They didn't worry about fish windows, they didn't worry about a lot of those other things. If we had a road that transported cars, we would just kill the river. If we had a road that transported cars, we would just kill the river. So that's certainly not what we want to do, but this illustrates kind of the different priorities that we set for pedestrian access and for motorists. And if, you know, we definitely don't have funding difficulties when we talk about car roads, but somehow when we want to, you know, have a bigger conversation about how are we going to protect this pedestrian and bike access path, it's something like. So I would like to say from a policy perspective, we, this is a good thing to spend money on. Not necessarily, I agree with what, you know, Councilperson Sung said about the quick fix aspect of it. That's not what we want to be doing. This is an emergency. I think that we should take care of it. I definitely think that in the long-term, we should be doing planning on how, where is a sustainable path? And, you know, we as policymakers should say this is a priority for funding. So, you know, I will, I, it's a difficult conversation, like I said, because it is a community treasure. People see it as, I still call it the waterfront trail, even though it's, you know, now the Olympic Discovery Trail. But I do think that in the long-term, we should have more pedestrian trails around our city. We, you know, and if we can do it in environmentally responsible ways, we have a lot of great, you know, places that we could put them, we could have trail systems. We've talked, you know, years past about Valley Creek and, you know, again, funding comes up where suddenly it's very difficult to find funding for pedestrian access when it's often very easy. And this is not anyone's fault that's in this room. This is the way our culture sets its priorities. But we should, I really am looking forward to that when we talk about our capital facilities plan, that, you know, engaging in that long-term, what is, how, what is the future of this trail and how can we make it a sustainable trail that everyone can use? I really look forward to that conversation. But in the meantime, I'm going to move to approve and authorize the city manager to sign a work task request with Clonk County as part of the multi-agency reciprocal maintenance agreement and to make minor modifications to the agreement if necessary. Second.
Thank you. I just want to chime in really quickly and say, I agree that making this fix right now is, I think, a good idea. We have a lot of people who rely on that trail to get their outdoor time safely. And so I like the idea of this. And I also really appreciate all the conversation about thinking more long-term strategically about what we're going to do to maintain some outdoor space, whether it's in the same spot or not. And so, but let's do that not tonight. Let's not decide that tonight. Councilmember Scott?
I just have a follow-up. One thing too that we didn't mention here is we, the council here has done a lot of work on climate change. So climate change in our area is the rise in sea level is going to be our concern. And with that trail being right next to the shoreline, it's just the repairs will just, will occur probably, possibly more often. I also want to clarify my comment about quick fixes. I didn't say that fixing it right now, this quick fix or this fix that's being presented is not a good idea. I'm just saying continued short-term fixes over and over are not a good idea. Thank you.
I'm going to have Deputy Mayor Carr speak and then councilmember Sherman Mark.
I really appreciate the conversation we've been having. Something I was thinking about in December when this came to light was how I would respond as a city council member and thinking and taking that duty to both respecting taxpayer funds that are going to fix this for years to come, along with my own desire and I think a lot of people's desire to have a working trail that also really funds tourism, right? The Frosty Moss Relay is mentioned in this and that brings people in from, you know, across Washington to our community and that there is really value added by this trail. And I think for me, one of the things that I really hope that we can do is have a presentation about what some strategies are moving forward for trail maintenance in the city of Port Angeles. And I would ask that one of the things that's also presented in that presentation is what's going to happen to this trail along Marine Drive and where some of those pretty large port buildings are that really limit pedestrian accessibility to that section of trail as well, just due to the high volume of traffic. So I think when we're talking about the trail in general, we need to look at the section that the city owns in its entirety and not just the section that is, you know, falling into the city.
Thank you. Councilmember Sherman Mark.
Well, councilmember Carr, you're going to be getting a call from the board about that one tomorrow because they love that idea of relocating the trail away from those high vehicle access locations. So just to clarify, if we were talking about Highway 101 running along the beach between Morris Creek and Peabody Creek or downtown Port Angeles, I would be making the same argument that that's not a sustainable place to have infrastructure. A sandy beach can also be a place where people run. It doesn't mean that the trail ends. It means that the trail takes a different form. If we're concerned about ADA access, for example, there are technologies like what the national park uses at Mora, where you can put kind of a mobile platform on top of sand, which allows for potentially more accessibility. That could be removed seasonally if needed. I want us to just have an open mind about what that space is, how much it's going to cost in the long run to maintain it as is, what it's going to ultimately look like as we continue to try to maintain a fixed stationary infrastructure in a mobile landscape, which is a beach, and what it could be otherwise and what that amenity would be for us, for our community, as a space where people can go, as, you know, an amenity that we currently don't have accessible in Port Angeles.
Thank you. Councilmember French?
Just lastly, I just want to clarify. I wasn't trying to mischaracterize anyone and I hope no one felt that I was trying to do that. The point that I'm trying to make is that from a policy perspective, these kinds of decisions, these kind of funding challenges should be elevated in our priority list. So where it ends up, I am sure we'll have, you know, difficult choices, but we'll have staff help with, you know, those projections. When it comes to trails, not just the Discovery Trail, but any sort of like pedestrian-focused, bike-focused, multimodal transportation-focused, you know, trails in our city or any of those kind of like, you know, pedestrian bridges, those kind of things, those should be higher funding priorities than they happened in the past. That's, I think, the policy point that I want to make and that this provides, you know, a good example of. And I would also just like, you know, well, anyway, we should vote not extend this. We could talk about this for a long time.
You should come to the March Work Session on multimodal transportation and looking at the bigger picture from a policy standpoint for the city. Any last comments or questions? All right, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, council.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. And that brings us to a new letter, J1, which begins on page J1. And Thomas, are you going to say that?
Yes. So thank you again, council. Tonight before you, what you have is a document that contemplates, does contemplate a request to approve a lease extension for the building that our light operations is currently and temporarily housed in. I think for councilmembers who are new, it's important that if you have questions, feel free to ask them. The detail over the last 30 years of what's kind of gone on with our light operations department in relations to where they've been physically located is pretty good in this document. I'm going to spare you the bore of me reading it to you, but feel free to ask questions that information is there. Secondly, I thought that this would be a good opportunity to briefly give you an update and just letting you know that we are in the process of designing the new light operations facility for the piece of property that was purchased next to the corporation yard where the rest of our operations is housed. Right now, as of December, we are at 30% design and it is our intent to bring to you some information a little bit later once we get farther down the road. It's always helpful to give you guys good information, not just pretty pictures. And so we want to do that. We are at 30% design, we are on schedule and we are on budget. So what you see right now is us just simply requesting that we have the opportunity to extend the lease for this building for the next two years, which gives us time to fully design the building and construct the building, which we have the funds to do so. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
All right, council, any questions?
I have a comment. It's a great price for that property, you know, and being a former employee of LIDOP, I understand the history and what's going on there. Really, what other option do we really have? So there's really no other place we could house this department. The only frustration I had was after they moved into that location, that lease farm closed down and I didn't even know if that was even a considerable option or not. I think this is a great price.
Thank you. Councilmember Scott?
I just want to thank you for negotiating the renewed lease. But I just have one question. You said that you're going to, when you get further along with the design, is that at 65% design that you'll bring it to the council for us to look at it? So if we have maybe some input, we could do it at that level?
Yeah, it's really going to be, I think, pretty informational. I think it's important to note that the piece of property that we purchased for this building is not particularly large and the ingress and egress as it relates to how a building has to be designed is relatively specific. So to be honest, this building is going to be roughly 6,000 square feet smaller than the space that we're in right now. The reason that that's going to work is because it's actually being designed and built for a light operations utility, whereas the facility that we're in right now is just a facility that we're, you know, square pay ground hole currently. And so with those efficiencies, we will have a smaller footprint, but we also need to have a smaller footprint because of that. That's a long way of saying, I don't know. There's a whole lot that we can do outside of what's going to be proposed, but we're certainly happy to bring to you just some kind of general updates to show you what's going on and it's a great problem.
Just a follow-up. I mean, I think that us being able to review 65% designs, I think we're all pretty, can catch on pretty quickly here on the council, that I think we will be able to, you know, know what you're doing. But I would like to see at least 65% design levels just to kind of get a feel of what you're trying to do, where you're at, what are your challenges, just as informational.
Sure. No, we're happy to do that.
Any other questions from council, comments?
I move to approve a 24-month lease extension for the outstalking compound for a total amount of $184,000 and authorize the city manager to sign and execute a lease extension and make minor modifications to the lease if necessary.
Second.
Any last comments or questions? All right, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. And thank you for, it's exciting that we're living at home. I do think it's worth reiterating that we have been anticipating this and putting money in reserves for this and that it does meet the council directive of no new debt. And I think that's unusual and unique and we should all be grateful for the people who came before us who made that decision and that we were able to do that. So thank you. And next, move on to J2, the Laurel Substation Electrical Switch Gear Upgrade Contract Award on page J11 in a printed packet. Again, Jarrett Hunter.
Thank you, Mayor, council. This is my last one, I promise. Before you, what you have is a contract that we are asking for you to approve to award for the Laurel Street Electrical Switch Gear upgrade. The contents of this project are relatively technical. I think it's important to note that this is one of five substations that we need to replace the switch gear at. And in saying that, I really want to highlight the award amount that we received was $278,000 for a project that we budgeted $500,000 for. I think that that is an opportunity for us to give tremendous kudos to the engineering division in light operations because they really worked with some efficiencies, opened up that substation, had people come in, present alternatives as to how we could do things a little bit more efficiently. And ultimately, we got a better project price because we went through that process and it's, the benefits are going to be five-fold. So you're seeing some real savings and just hats off to them once again. So tonight, we're asking for you, council, to approve a contract with Dunn Electrical Company Incorporated of Lynwood, Washington to upgrade the Laurel Street Substation Electrical Switch Gear in an amount not to exceed $278,054.60 including taxes and authorize the city manager to make minor modifications as necessary. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions?
What happens to the fiscal savings from this?
I think that was my cue. So they will be revealed as part of the CFP process. Councilmember McCon? I wasn't sure if you were committed to.
No, I noticed, I'm very surprised at the $94,000 bid. I see that they missed quite a few things. And I'm very surprised at the Sturgeon Electric bid, how high that was. I guess they were just hoping to get the job. I hate to ask some of the technical, can you just tell me what manufacturer the switch gear is?
I can get you that information.
Okay, I just care, I rode by there the other day looking at the substation. I was trying to figure out where, and maybe we can discuss that at some other time.
Yeah.
I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
Councilmember French?
I just, so I'll just make the motion. I move to award a contract with Dunn Electrical Company Inc., Lynwood, Washington to upgrade the Laurel Substation Electrical Switch Gear in the amount not to exceed $278,054.60 including taxes and authorize the city manager to make minor modifications as necessary.
I second that motion.
Say that my dad's an electrical engineer and the first time that I was reading a city document a couple of years ago about, in the, I think the staff work plan about upgrading switch gear and I saw the price tag, I thought, switch gear sounds really small. Like, they just come over and they don't work. It just doesn't seem like.
Switch gear, it's just a little switch, right? Apparently not. My dad is not, not proud of me.
That's the reason we didn't put you on the UAC. Totally kidding. Sorry, I'm getting late yet. So I also just want to say, I really appreciate what I see as some very significant shifts in creative problem solving in public works. And I think the city is going to be significantly better off for that. And so I think it's just worth mentioning, particularly because that was the case at this point. So any further comments or questions?
Keep pressing it.
All right, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. All right, moving on to council reports. Let's start to my left this time.
I have no report other than the guys out working the trucks, plumbing the snow. Thank you so much. And there was a water main break on the corner of Francis and Sixth last night. And man, those guys got out there super quick, tore up the ground, fixed the leak. It was raining, it was like two hours maybe. It was like, you know, they replaced whatever they had to put some cones around, but I didn't even get any problems with water interruption. I think so. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember McCon?
So on your behalf, Mayor, I attended the newly-elected charter review commission meeting. It was pretty generic for their first meeting. There was election of officers, introduction of staff support, 2020 meeting times, locations and typical first meeting, trying to get their bearings straight. If you're interested, some of the newly-elected officers were, the chair is going to be Sue Orson, the vice chairs are Norman Turner and Joseph Murray, and the parliamentarian is going to be Andrew May. And they will be meeting the second and fourth Thursday evenings from 6:00 to 8:00 at the courthouse off of Fourth Street in room 160. And the next meeting, they're going to be bringing forth the list of. And the next meeting, they're gonna be bringing forth the list of priorities pertaining to the existing charter that each member would like to discuss, or change, or revise. And they're gonna go over those list of priorities, and that should be tomorrow night, if I've looked at my calendar correctly. They introduced their staff, Mark Lane, the chief financial officer, and I was really surprised at their budget of $8,200. That didn't seem like a whole lot of money. $4,000 was allocated for charter review services, and $4,000 for travel, $200 for supplies. Their legal counsel was Elizabeth Turner, who was the deputy prosecuting attorney, and she just informed on what, how they could bring forth legal questions to her, and how she could respond. So it was a really interesting meeting, just to see how the 15 people together communicated and got along. It was pretty interesting. I would try to influence people to try to go there tomorrow night. Why not? Also, and we, a lot of us attended the EDC Gala at Seven Cedars. That was a lot of fun. That was the first one I've ever been to. I think it was only the third one they had. But one thing I was, I took from that was Colleen mentioned, and I think I had the numbers right last year, though I had like 90 people attend, and this year, there was 250. So that's quite a significant change from last year. So, other than that, it's been fighting snow and shoveling, and that's about it.
I also just want to say a huge thank you to the city teams who were out plowing snow and who really worked so hard on behalf of our community to keep, to keep people safe. I was noting earlier how it felt to me like there was a real difference in response, both on, like, especially in just the city's consciousness, like citizenry. I was at Swains on Wednesday, and, you know, everyone was buying sleds instead of snow shovels, and really just seeing that kind of difference in knowing what to expect, and that people were prepared, and that the city had a response. And I think that really came through and really showed the level of proactiveness and responsiveness that we had. So, thank you.
Counselor member French?
Prior to the snow, I went on a stream walk on the property of Jim and Robbie Mantooth. They were interested in having council members see the conservation work that they do on that land, and also their dealing with adjacent city property and some of their own property, where people who don't have anywhere else to stay are spending the night, and unfortunately leaving garbage and that sort of thing. So we had a conversation about that, as well as, you know, understanding the salmon spawning there in Ennis Creek, which their property borders. There were a number of people involved in that street walk that they're organizing. I agree with the comments about the snow response. I even saw people as snow blowers, which I didn't know were possible in Western Washington. And, you know, I just want to read something from one of, on Manager West's second update on the winter storm that he sent to the council, and it's just two lines here. "The police department handled approximately 65 calls for service during the 24 hours of peak snow activity. This is less than our normal call volume. Calls to Penncom also appear to be down. The impact of police and Penncom were considerably, considerably less than the 2019 storm, or what we see normally during winter storms." So my thought on that is that, you know, it might just be a coincidence, it might be confounded by other variables, but what I hope is that it's an indication of increased community resilience, in that we're learning how to deal with a severe weather event, and hopefully figuring out how to help each other, or being more prepared ourselves with our own households, to be able to deal with that. And in some way, although it's not necessarily fair to make this comparison, events like that are perhaps little fire drills for larger events, whether it's an earthquake, or fire, or, you know, the Elmore River's not flowing high enough to drill water, or whatever it is, where neighbors are gonna have to help other neighbors in those events. And police and fire, the emergency response that we expect, and it's really important to have, they'll be triaging. And so the more we learn to help each other during those events, whether it's a snowstorm, I think the better prepared we will be for significant events. And I just want to clarify that being able to call 911 and getting emergency help in under five minutes is a powerful and lifesaving tool, and people should absolutely call 911 when they need it. Our emergency responders frequently say, please correct me if I get this wrong, that they'd rather respond to a false alarm than have not been called when they should have been. But at the same time, our 911 system, our police and fire emergency response system is a tool that can be overwhelmed. And so I think it's really important for us as a community to develop the capacity to help each other. So, you know, like, is your neighbor stuck in the driveway? Well, help them out. You know, like, is your neighbor's dog barking incessantly? Like, call the neighbor first, make sure they're okay. 911 isn't always our first response. And hopefully, that lack of higher call volumes during that storm event is an indication of a positive trend in our community. So I appreciate the contentious vote to be the coordinating committee, the composition conference representative for Clam Transit. So I want to provide a little bit of background for the rest of the council on that. State law requires every four years or so that a regional transportation planning organ, area, no, I'm totally messing up the acronym. What is the, what is the acronym for Clam Transit officially?
I don't remember.
It's a, it's a transportation, public benefit transit area, right? And so within that area, the cities in that area and the county in that area, when we weren't even talking about doubles for most of county areas, have to come together and decide what the composition of the governing body is for that, for that area, meaning Clam Transit. What's the board for Clam Transit's supposed to look like? Currently, it's two county commissioners and two representatives each from SWIM, from Port Angeles, and from Forks. So the three cities and the county. We could choose to modify that in one of these composition conferences, and I'll be the city's representative for that, based on our vote earlier today. One thing that a number of people enter into, and I thought of this myself, so I've been doing a little bit of research on it, is, well, why does it have to be elected officials? Like, we already have a full-time elected official position. We ran for city council, and now Clam Transit, which is a thing unto itself, it's not just another committee assignment, we're all just elected officials on Clam Transit. And one of the issues is that the state laws governing the kind of entity that Clam Transit is seem to limit to basically elected officials like ourselves, who can be on that committee. So as much as I would like to see writers on that committee, or other people who say, you know, Clam Transit is my passion, public transit is my passion, that's what I'm gonna focus on, and that's why I want to be on Clam Transit Board, I don't think we have that option based on the way the law works. Now, the law is vague, but the issue, as advised by Clam Transit's attorney, is you want to make sure you have solid board composition. If you went out for, you know, more sales tax revenue, or you went into debt in some way, you don't want to be accused of not having the authority to take on the liability. So our options might be pretty narrow. That said, it's not actually a decision by Clam Transit, and Clam Transit attorney says, "Well, check with the city attorney, because that's really who you need to check with." And I owe Bill a callback. He's called me back, and I've got it back to him. And so it really is our decision as a council, kind of what position we want to take on the composition of Clam Transit's board. So my intent is to, probably the second meeting in February, sometime like that, try and get this on as an agenda item, to just see if council members want to discuss further what Clam Transit's board looks like. But it ultimately is a decision that we, along with SWIM and Forks and the county, get to weigh in on. And I think that comes just from the history of, you know, we could run our own transit agency, but instead, we chose to partner with the county, partner with SWIM and Forks, and run a collective transit agency under the public transit benefit area. There it is, public transit benefit area authorization that the state allows. I'll be attending the PRTPO Peninsula Regional Transportation Planning Organization, TAC, which is the Technical Advisory Committee meeting on January 30th. One of my intentions as the council representative for the PRTPO executive board is to try to better understand that organization, and I think by interfacing with staff who attend the TAC meeting, I'll be able to better do that. That was meeting canceled due to the snowstorm, and it's been rescheduled for the 30th. I was reading Department of Commerce grant stuff, and I continue to be disappointed by Department of Commerce using 20,000 people, population, as the cutoff for grant awards. So there was a grant that came up, and if you're over 20,000 population city, you're eligible for 100,000. If you're less than 20,000, you're eligible for 50,000. It feels to me like we have to deal with a lot of the same regulatory frameworks that larger cities deal with. You know, we're one of the only cities on the peninsula that has to deal with Western Washington stormwater permit requirements, for example. So we're dealing with these big city issues, but we're doing it with, you know, basically half the funding. I don't really know how to address that issue. It seems to come from Commerce, it seems to come from the state legislature, we may use 20,000 people as well, but being at about 19,500, it really, I think hurts us for our ability to take care of what we need. Two weeks ago, I attended the Port Angeles School Board meeting, and I wanted to comment about that in light of a few things that they do at their meeting. One is they have a policy committee. And like, their policy, like, discussion is just so efficient and well, and like, it didn't just land on their lap the week before, like, they actually, and it works. Apparently, they've actually presented at the regional, or the statewide conference of school board officials about how to do a policy committee. So we have just, you know, just over the A Street Bridges, a group that knows how to do a policy committee, and I think would be excited to help us if that's something we want to talk about. They also use a program called Board Docs for creating their board packet, and also even during the meeting, you know, you can look at the screen on the wall and see, I mean, you know, because you know those things. And, and like, the clerk is actually putting in who seconded the motion on the fly, like, in real time, and it's then, you know, no need to actually write out notes later on, and it's just happening right there, right then. The Board Docs program doesn't require, like, assembling a massive PDF document or any of that, it just kind of officially manages that. I talked to Jenny Wilson, who's superintendent's assistant afterward, and she feels like it pays for itself in terms of save staff time. And so I, I think there's some things the school district's doing that are, are efficiencies that we can look at. They also were very casually talking about their support for the capital levy. They thanked us as well for that support. And I was like, wait a second, they can't do that? They can't talk about their support for the levy? They're the, why? And so I asked them afterward, like, "How are you doing that?" And they were like, "Well, we passed a resolution in support of our own measure." And I was like, "What? You can do that?" And apparently, on the advice of council, they did. And so it's something to think about. I had no idea that you could do that. But in the future, when we put something out, like the affordable housing measure, I think we should consider whether that is an option for us as well. Because it did help to reduce this confined, really kind of absurd thing where you can't speak in favor of something that obviously you want to pass because you just voted to put up a ballot, you know what I mean? All right, so, I'm sorry, I have a long council report here. Yeah. So there's an MRC Public Records Act and Open Public Meeting Act case law update later this week, and I think staff will probably attend me, and I plan to join you if possible. And then Association of Washington City's program concerning kind of revenue, I think that those are all things through their, their middle list of developers. I'm speaking next Tuesday evening about water law as part of a program that legal and voters put on. I'll be speaking alongside a staff person from Department of Ecology at that SWIM City Hall at 6:30. It unfortunately conflicts with the Department of Ecology talk here about harbor cleanup, so I will not be attending that talk in my hospital, in my letter room. And I apologize that I'll be out of town on February 4th, so I'll be calling into that meeting. And so I offered a cutout to Carrie, but she's kind of said no for the photo. I also want to suggest to the council that we consider making a webinar that MRC is doing in February 12. It's a primer on Open Public Meeting Act. It's February 12, probably 11 to noon. I think it would be a good opportunity for us to kind of hear some of the pitfalls and what works and what doesn't. I know Attorney Laura is covering a lot of that. It's sometimes nice to hear it from different people in multiple perspectives as well. I'm not saying it contradicts anything Attorney Laura at Dutt says. It does not, but, you know, it's an opportunity for us to kind of hear it from MRC staff as well. I find that repetition of those things is really helpful. Finally, two other items. So over the weekend, I attended a really packed memorial service for Leah Hart, who I've known since 2004, when we worked together in a community organizing project called Friends of Churitza. Laura Alacal, travel chairman, Frances Charles spoke at her memorial. State Representative Chapman was also in attendance, a number of people, obviously. And Leah was one of those people who would always fight for what is right, and was not afraid to speak truth to power. And I think that's a good lead into the next item I'd like to mention. So finally, yesterday was Martin Luther King Junior Day. He was killed at the age of 39. King was not publicly popular at the end of his life. He was speaking out against militarism in an economic system that produces poverty. Reader listened to his Three Evils of Society speech. He's moving beyond just talking about racism by the end of his life. And, you know, today, we talk about Dr. King as a national hero, we mythologize him in kind of this great man narrative. It was King who brought us civil rights, kind of just like Presidents Washington and Lincoln. But the civil rights movement, that Dr. King was a profound spokesman, that leader for was more than just one person. He wasn't the only person who died for justice in that movement. And nor is that movement over, particularly when you look at Dr. King's dream of reading society of the three evils of racism, militarism, and poverty. So to celebrate Martin Luther King Day, as a part of what happened, this history, I think is to do disservice to the memory of Dr. King, which would ask us to continue to dream of a world without hate, poverty, racism, and war. And it would ask us to do more than dream of that world, I think, but to act whenever possible to make it happen. So I appreciate the council, staff, members of the public for taking that up and working together toward that.
Thank you. Counselor member French?
Yeah, that was a great council report. Thank you. I attended the Olympic Peninsula Tourism Commission meeting. It was kind of a work session with just the partners. And it was, we talked about our budget, our next year, a few big marketing opportunities. We spent a lot more time talking about podcasts than I ever thought we would. But that's a new medium where, you know, there's a lot of advertising and marketing opportunities for people that, you know, are possible, you know, targets for tourism. We discussed having a booking into the website that they have, which is something a few other regions are doing, and that would be, you know, I think something that our local hotels would really appreciate, as OBTC is LTAC-funded. It might be complicated if you want it at short-term rentals, that's a thing that we have, we'll have to have more discussion about. But, you know, this is something where I know our local Chamber of Commerce has had those discussions about, when we talk about the tourism, you know, industry, it's not always just enough to be providing information to visitors. Some of them need that concierge service, and we need to figure out who is best positioned to offer it, and it might need to be at different levels. So that was a good meeting. If anybody does want to hear more about what the Olympic Peninsula Tourism Commission does, I know that their executive director, Marcia, would be interested in coming to give a presentation to our council about regional marketing, and how, you know, this is something that just in the last few years, we've seen a huge amount of tourism growth, and that requires, you know, maintenance, both of our public facilities and our marketing. I also attended the EDC Gala. It was a really good event. I think that the thing that I really was, the good takeaway that both main speakers highlighted, and my wife's a dental hygienist, and so she was really excited that she got to go and shake the hand of the guy that invented the Sonicare. But both main speakers really highlighted that environmental policy doesn't have to conflict and oppose economic development, there's things that can work hand-in-hand. So I thought that was a really good message to keep in mind. And then this weekend, I'll be attending the Chamber Community Awards Gala, and so that'll be fun. If anybody wants to buy tickets, I'm sure they're still available at chambersignups.com.
Counselor member set?
I was fortunate to take my girls out to the 31st I was fortunate to take my girls out to the 31st kind of ribbon cutting or Habitat for Humanity. We were able to see the 31st home that has been built in the community. I was, I, when I got there, I wasn't expecting to really know anybody. Found out a few of my friends were on Habitat for Humanity board, so I'm learning more about my friends. I also discovered too that the homeowner is an acquaintance. Our children play on a sport together. So it was really pleasing to see a family that I was familiar with be, do all the hard work that was required of that family to construct their home in the manner that a nonprofit organization like Habitat for Humanity. And if you guys haven't been down there, I had never been down 16th Street to where the houses that are being constructed are, and it's actually quite cozy little alcove of other homes that were constructed by Habitat for Humanity. And also Olympic, Ulycap has some homes across the way too. So it's a really nice neighborhood. Recommend you guys to go check it out, and it was quite, it was really nice, and I'm glad I went. We treasured through the snow. I do have to say, I got lost. I was going down the wrong, I was going east instead of west, so that didn't help. But I also want to say that, you know, not only did Port Angeles get a lot of snow, but I also understand that there were issues with Olympic National Park, with being able to open the road and get, again, we talked about tourism and the winter part up there, with skiing and snowboarding is a big tourism draw. It's one of, I think, only two national parks that provide snowboarding and skiing. So I, on Facebook, I understand that there was a lot of issues with them trying to get that road open, and a lot of people were kind of disappointed that they didn't get a hit the slopes. So I remember one year, our community, there was a drive to help keep that road open throughout the whole winter. So I don't know if there's another continued effort that needs to help Olympic National Park, or what the issues were, but eventually they did get up there. But again, that, that's what I did. I attended the Habitat for Humanity event, and I'm really glad I did attend that. But in the future, this coming Friday, I will be meeting with Brian, the fire, or not Fire Department, I'm sorry, Police Department, and get a tour of that. I have my committee assignments now in my book, so I can start attending those and have more of a report, so I can outdo Lindsay over here.
Just trying to keep up with Mike from last time.
Thank you. I have a, I guess, just a brief report. I do want to say thank you, Councilmember Sherman Warren, for your words about Martin Luther King. I went to Martin Luther King Elementary School and have realized that, you know, K through two, there's only so much you can get into about someone. But we spent, anyway, I've spent a lot of time being surprised at how few people know about even just basic civil rights movement history, and I think your challenge is well-timed. So, so thank you for that. I also wanted to say thank you to the city for their work clearing. It was kind of fun to see the John Deere driving down the street with the plow instead of a regular truck. And I also will say that during the snow, I found myself very grateful to live behind a park, and not very grateful that I had a trampoline with a net around the outside. So I got lots of exercise shoveling, and my kids got lots of exercise sledding, and they put some rail thing out, and we're doing all sorts of snowboard tricks and building jumps, and it was just fast enough to be able to do that, and fluffy enough that you didn't get hurt. So anyway, I will be done with my council report for now, and I think we'll all have more to report on next time when we've had some of our committee work. So let's move on to City Manager Report.
Good evening, Council. I do want to touch on, Councilmember Suggs shared about Habitat for Humanity investment, and I think there's a tie-in to that in your City Manager information, seeing the number of new housing projects that we saw in 2019. It's great to see that type of investment occurring. Obviously Habitat is one of those groups that's doing quite a bit, as well as I know we have others in the community who have invested a great deal in ensuring that we have improved housing in this community. I think it's important to tie in just awareness to that particular development for Habitat, in that that was the city's first infill overlay zone. It was an opportunity for dividing the property with very limited infrastructure having to be invested in the site. And since the time that it was implemented, there's been a number of units put in place. It continues to result in positive housing results for our community, and I just think it's an important example that also aligns with the strategic plan we discussed earlier, being that we have infill development as a goal within that strategic plan. To broaden the City Manager Report a bit, we do have on your dais a 2020 Legislative Priorities Paper. Really appreciate the subcommittee that got together to provide some focus for staff on those issues. If you have questions on those, or if you'd like to raise any concerns with that document, we wanted to provide that to you this evening. And then finally, I really want to share some information to celebrate, and that is to congratulate the Finance Department, in that they just received notice that the Government Finance Association has awarded to them the Comprehensive Finance Report, CAPRA Award for 2018. So that's great news, to see that award provided to our Finance Department. We're really excited, and that's all I have.
Thank you, thank you.
What does that word mean?
It's considered the highest award you can receive for accounting, basically. So it's the government's version of doing everything properly for a finance department. So that's excellent. Thank you, thanks for sharing that. All right, so we come to the second public comment period of our meeting. Is there anyone who would like to address the council? And if so, please state your name and whether or not you reside in the city, and keep your remarks, three minutes for less, please.
Hi, my name's Ed Chad, I live in Port Angeles, Hill. Thank Carrie Butler arrived with me. From Dr. King, says, "Our lives begin to end the day we, the day we become silent about things that matter." So I don't mean to beat you over the head with some of these issues, but I want to talk a little bit more about climate change. As a P.S., in the letter that I sent to you all, I mentioned the importance of the North Olympic Development Council. And pardon me, I didn't do my homework and read the packet, but I assume somebody on council is a representative, Navarro, great. I want to underscore the importance of this body. It is the body that attempts to cohere all of the stakeholders across the North Olympic Peninsula. It's an important regional planning body, and that body, for example, produced a very important 2015 report about the expected impacts of climate change across the North Olympic Peninsula, and measures that we need to be taking to adapt to it. That report's going to provide, I believe, an important bulwark for the work that the Planning Commission is on right now. In addition to that, the NDC has, under the leadership of Mayor Brook, begun a matrix for local and tribal governments to start comparing what they're doing on climate, so we can get a more regional idea of what's going on. They're encouraging local and tribal governments to coordinate greenhouse gas inventory efforts. They're asking local and tribal governments to take a position on greenhouse gas reduction goals. The city, I think, is out ahead on a lot of this. And they're working on finding grant and other support for local and tribal governments to compose and implement climate plans. I can't underscore enough the leverage that you get out of this kind of regional planning. And I'm going to make a segue into talking about the Discovery Trail, the waterfront trail. As you know, I talked about this at the last meeting. I'm very happy to hear all the discussion from both council and staff. It seems pretty obvious to me, you've got a big, long-range problem on your hands, you all are not going to solve it. In fact, the entire city staff is not going to be able to solve this problem, in my opinion. I think you're going to end up having to find a consultant to really produce a professional level report that looks at the future, because you're not only looking at a complex problem in this timeframe. Can I have another minute or two?
Maybe just another 30 seconds, if you can wrap it up.
You all took a lot more time than I'm taking, okay. Because of climate change, you have a moving target, and you need somebody who understands what's, what's going on with that. We have some expertise here locally, in people like Ian Miller, the Washington Seagrant. There are consultants out there that do this kind of work. There are countries out there that specialize in this kind of work, like Holland. To do, to do this, oh, and I also want to underscore, I'm very happy that the city is coordinating with the County Road Department. As a former staff member of the County Road Department, I would underscore, there probably is no organization that's more cost-effective than the County Road Department. They may even provide some of the solution you may be looking for in keeping the road open to Hurricane Ridge. I would urge somebody to look into that possibility. And this ties back to the NODC, because I think that, again, the Discovery Trail is a regional asset, it's just that the city happens to own the most difficult part of that regional asset. And I think the NODC would be the perfect body to bring together the parties involved in the regional asset, and help get the grant you're going to need to put together the plan that will then get the next grant to work on that long-range solution. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Come on down.
Hi, everybody. My name's Eric Phillips. I've been a resident of Port Angeles for 15 years now, and I'm actually, the only reason I came up here is I want to do the same thing as council. I want to say thank you to the City Department, you know, all the employees. It was a big step up from last year, as far as I'm concerned, getting out there, getting on the roads, getting cleared for us. Granted, I live close to the hospital, but you know, and I don't go, I have no idea what it's like on the west side of town, because after football season, I don't cross the lake. So, but honestly, it just showed the difference. Last year at seven o'clock to go to work in the morning, the roads, the side roads were horrible. This year, by five o'clock when I step out the door, our side roads are all replying. Huge difference, whatever you guys are doing, please keep it up. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, then, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much.